Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the June twenty-sixth meeting of the governing body. Madam clerk, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Roybal.
President.
Jennifer, can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Mr. Seagrave.
Present.
Mr. White.
Present.
Dr. Aldridge. Are you still with us, Dr. Aldridge? Mayor Collins.
Present.
Mr. Cook. Mr. Escobal.
Present.
Mr. Johnson.
Present.
Mr. Laborn. And Dr. Rennie. I believe we have one member absent and one trying to get back on there.
And for the record, Mr. Cook is here.
Thank you.
Passionably so. If you all would join me in the pledge of allegiance. Dr. Aldridge, can you speak up so we know that you're here, please?
Yes, sir, I can hear you.
Okay, President, thank you.
Next item is number four, Consent Agenda. All items listed with the designation of CA are considered to be routine items by the governing body and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion on these items unless a member of the governing body's sub request and support by two other members is received. Any item removed from the consent agenda will be considered in its normal sequence on the agenda.
Thank you. Before we go to the consent agenda, though, I just want to say one thing. I want to congratulate Dr. Rennie. He was given the Person of the Year by the Greater Charten Chamber of Commerce on Friday night. In his case, it's a lifetime achievement award. And so anyways, congratulations to Dr. Rennie and for that well-deserved award. Now, at this time, is there any item a member of the governing body would like to remove from the consent agenda? Mr. Laborn?
Item twenty-two.
Concur.
Concur.
Yeah, that.
Nine C. Concur.
Concur.
Nine C has been removed.
This is twenty-nine H.
Concur.
Concur.
H is off.
Good.
Twenty-nine I.
Concur.
Concur.
Thirty A.
Concur.
Concur. Thirty A.
And thirty-one D.
Concur.
Concur.
All right, we have six items so far taking up the consent agenda. Good thing it's a big one this time. Anybody else?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I would move to remove twenty-nine J.
Concur.
Concur.
All right, twenty-nine J has also been removed. Any other items a member of the governing body wants to remove? All right, hearing none, we entertain a motion.
I'll move second.
Remove by Mr. Laborn, seconded by Mr. Seagrave. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed? The consent agenda is approved with items number twenty-two, twenty-nine C, twenty-nine H, twenty-nine I, thirty-eight, thirty-one D, and twenty-nine J removed. They'll be considered in their normal appearance on our agenda. Next item, please.
Six A, Public Hearing for the City of Cheyenne's amended program year 2020, consolidated plan prepared by the Cheyenne Housing and Community Development Office.
All right, we'll open the public hearing and start with a quick staff report.
Good evening. I'm Deanne Wood, of the Cheyenne Housing Community Development Office. The City of Cheyenne receives community development block grant funding from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. In 2020, the city also received CBG CV COVID funding. Three approved projects for this funding were canceled, which totaled over sixty-seven thousand. For the city's citizen participation plan, any project over twenty-five thousand requires an amendment. A notice of funding available was published and three applications were received. The H and C D Advisory Council recommends two of these applications: High Wyoming Healthcare Job Training, twenty thousand dollars, to provide medical training for low-income single mothers; Cumea Women's Dorm, forty-seven thousand two hundred and twenty-five, to provide for the expansion of the women's dorm. The consolidated plan, annual action plan, was amended, and a thirty-day comment period was held requesting input from Cheyenne residents. The H and C D office received no written comments on the plan. Are there any questions?
Does anyone have a question for our staff? Hearing none, Deanne, thank you so much, appreciate you. Anyone else in the audience like to speak on this public hearing? How about from the governing body? All right, the purpose of the public hearing has been met, thank you very much.
Next item is six B, Public Hearing for Bar and Grill Liquor License Application filed with the City Clerk's Office for Wyoming Downs OTB fourteen LLC, doing business as Wyoming Downs OTB fourteen LLC, thirteen forty-five Delrange Boulevard, Cheyenne, Wyoming.
All right, we'll open the public hearing for a bar and grill license application. Is anyone in the audience want to speak to that? Welcome. Would you turn that mic? There you go.
You. Thank you for having me here tonight. My name is Tracy Lakecock. I'm a partner attorney at Hurst Applegate here in Cheyenne, and I'm legal counsel for Wyoming Downs. Wyoming Downs is applying for a bar and grill license for its location at thirteen forty-five Delrange Boulevard. Starting July first, two thousand twenty-three, the bar and grill license will allow entertainment to be included as part of the sixty percent revenue calculation that was historically only reserved for food services. Wyoming Downs Delrange location has been in operation since two thousand twenty-one, and this location alone generated a little over four hundred thousand dollars in tax revenue for the City of Cheyenne in two thousand twenty-two. Wyoming Downs believes that that tax revenue will increase with the approval of this application. In the interest of time, I provided a PowerPoint with the salient points for the application. If the bar and grill liquor license is approved at this location, it will become a twenty-one and over-only facility. Wyoming Downs operates other facilities to offer alcoholic beverages and have found this to be the most efficient way to protect against underage drinking. Additionally, all of Wyoming staff at all of its location, regardless of whether or not alcoholic beverages are sold, are tips-trained. Finally, Wyoming Downs has a desk at the door at this location to check for IDs. Currently, there are various snack food offerings and non-alcoholic beverage offerings at this facility. I appreciate your time and consideration for this application. Thank you.
So you don't take off yet. Does anyone in the governing body have a question for the applicant? Mr. Cook?
Um, Mr. Mayor, through you, I'm not sure if it's for the applicant necessarily, or for the city clerk, or even yourself.
Ask the question.
Um, so with with the change in statute allowing entertainment, does that completely do away with with any requirement for food at all?
Um, the answer to your question is yes. It has to be sixty percent food, entertainment, or a combination of both.
Okay, so entertainment, which is, you know, the definition is being worked on. Okay, so that can take the place, that can solely take the place of food, so they don't, there does not have to be.
Mr. Mayor, through you, Chris Jones, City Clerk, to Councilman Cook, that is correct. It can be a combination of or one of the food or entertainment.
Okay. All right.
Mr. Johnson. Okay.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Or Dr. Rennie.
Yeah, I want to know that the applicant has said they thought that revenues would increase as a result of the liquor license. Is that because they think that they're, they will have more patrons as a result, or it's just because of the added liquors?
Mr. Mayor, through you, to Councilman Rennie, yes, that's correct. We do have alcohol servings at other locations around the state, and we have found that it increases patronage.
Thank you, Mayor.
Anybody else in the governing body want to ask a question of the applicant? Thank you, ma'am, appreciate you being here.
Thank you so much.
Anyone else in the audience want to speak under this public hearing for the application for a bar and grill license for Wyoming Downs? Hearing none there? Anybody else in the governing body comments? All right, the purpose of public hearing has been met, and we'll assign this item to the Finance Committee.
Number seven, ordinance on third reading, amending section five twelve point zero three zero licenses and permits types of chapter five twelve, alcoholic liquor and malt beverages of Title V, Business Licenses and Regulations of the Municipal Code of the City of Cheyenne, Wyoming.
Interesting, we just had a public hearing, and this is the ordinance that allows us to define what adult entertainment is as required by state law. And so is there anybody here in the audience want to speak to this ordinance on third and final reading? All right, hearing none. Mr. White, motion, please.
Mr. Mayor, the recommendation of the Finance Committee is to adopt and I so move.
Second.
It's been seconded by Mr. Roybal. Comments for members of the governing body? Okay, hearing none. Madam clerk, would you take the vote?
Dr. Rennie.
Yes.
Mr. Roybal.
Yes.
Dr. Aldridge?
Yes.
Thank you.
Collins.
Yes.
Mr. Cook.
Yes.
Mr. Escobal.
Aye.
Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
And Mr. Laborn.
Yes.
The ordinance is approved on third and final reading. Thank you.
Next item is number eight, ordinance on second reading, reading, creating chapter two point nine six, ethical obligations of the public officials, public members, and city employees of Title II, administration and personnel of the municipal code is the City of Cheyenne, Wyoming, specifying the ethical duties and obligations of public officials, public members, and employees of the City of Cheyenne.
All right, is there anyone in the audience like to speak to this ordinance? Right, hearing none. Mr. Seagrave.
Mr. Mayor, the recommendation of the Public Services Committee is to approve on second reading, and I so move.
Second.
That was seconded by Mr. Cook?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Seagrave.
I move to postpone until the July tenth, two thousand twenty-three meeting of the governing body.
Second.
All right, we have a motion to postpone made by Mr. Seagrave, seconded by Mr. Cook. Is there anyone in the audience like to speak to this postponement before us?
Mr. Mayor, I just have Michelle or Dr. Aldridge with him here very soon when he gets to that point.
Yes, ma'am, thank you for that. No one in the audience? All right, Dr. Aldridge.
Uh, thank you, Mayor Collins. I just appreciate the opportunity to postpone this just one more two-week period so that we can finalize the last details on this. Councilman Rennie, Councilman White, Councilman Cook, and I have met, and I know that our city attorney and the official committee of the government, especially have been working hard on this to make sure that we get it right and that it works for Wyoming and for Cheyenne especially, not just for the general population but for our employees. So I appreciate the postponement opportunity and going to encourage my colleagues to vote for that.
We're having a real hard time hearing you with all the noise in the background, but I think we got your comments. Thank you, ma'am. Anybody else in the governing body want to speak to the two-week postponement? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The ordinance is postponed for two weeks.
But, excuse me, next item is number nine, ordinance on second reading, amending chapter fifteen point twenty, National Electrical Code, adopted, appendix K, International Building Code Administration, provisions adopted of Title fifteen, Buildings and Construction of the Municipal Code of the City of Cheyenne, Wyoming, updating the Incorporated National Electrical Code provisions as specified.
All right, we're required by state law to, within six months of the state passing a law, to at least match theirs, if not exceed those ordinances, and at this time, oh, sir. Wait, you have comments, please.
Mr. Mayor, just with President First F reports, did you need one?
Okay, thank you very much. Anyone in the audience who want to speak to this ordinance on second reading? All right, hearing none. Mr. Seagrave.
Mr. Mayor, the recommendation of the Public Services Committee is to approve on second reading, and I so move.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. White. Comments from members of the governing body?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Johnson.
So, kind of going back, when any time that we try to keep up with state statute, I was reminded this last week in regards to the debate we had in regards to fire suppression last year, and because we've been on the topic of, you know, increased cost in regards to attainable housing, so with the approval of this, do we see a lot of increased costs that maybe the developer is going to pass on to the tenants? You know, if they're, whether they're grandfathered in or it's new build, or is this strictly for new build? I guess that's a couple of questions in one.
Well, I think I heard is, what's the impact on the cost of housing going to be with this change to the national code?
Um, Mr. Mayor, through you, to President Johnson, um, I would not uh, say that the costs related to the code changes are going to be impactful to the community. There are a number of items that actually have been lessened in the code. There are some GFCI outlet protection that was once required in islands and peninsulas that is being taken out of the code. Now we just have to provisionally provide it for those areas. There are some other areas where GFCI protection has been added. However, there was a amendment that allowed it to be postponed out till, I believe it was twenty twenty-six, due to the fact that manufacturers have not been able to keep up with the industry requirement.
So kind of revenue neutral at this point?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Mr. Johnson? Any follow-up?
No further question.
Thank you. Anybody else? All right, hearing none. Thank you. All right, we have a motion in a second. Any last-minute comments? All right, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Those opposed?
No.
Mr. Johnson is a no, and the ordinance passes on second reading.
Number ten, ordinance on second reading, annexing to the City of Cheyenne, Wyoming, land located northwest of and adjacent to the intersection of Thomas Road and Ridge Road.
All right, this is an owner-initiated annexation. They want to be part of our beautiful city. Is there anybody in the audience here to speak to this ordinance today? Hearing none. Mr. Seagrave.
Mr. Mayor, the recommendation of the Public Services Committee is to approve on second reading, and I so move.
Second.
That, Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Thank you. Comments for members of the governing body on the annexation? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 The ordinance is approved on second reading.
Next item is number eleven, ordinance on second reading, amending the official zoning map of the City of Cheyenne, establishing the zoning classification of MR medium-density residential for land being annexed to the City of Cheyenne, located northwest of and adjacent to the intersection of Thomas Road and Ridge Road.
All right, we just annexed or worked on annexing a piece of property. This is a zone change to allow there to be future uses for that property? Is anyone in the audience here to speak to that? Hearing none. Mr. Seagrave.
Mr. Mayor, the recommendation of the Public Services Committee is to approve on second reading, and I so move.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Cook. Comments for members of the governing body? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ordinance is approved on second reading.
Next item is number twelve, ordinance on second reading, annexing to the City of Cheyenne, Wyoming, land located south of and adjacent to Rollin Street, east of Cleveland Avenue.
All right, I believe this is also an owner-initiated county pocket annexation. Is there anyone in the audience here to speak to this ordinance today? Hearing none. Mr. Seagrave.
Mr. Mayor, the recommendation of the Public Services Committee is to approve on second reading, and I so move.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Cook. Any comments on the annexation by a member of the governing body? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ordinance is approved on second reading.
Next item is number thirteen, ordinance on second reading, amending the official zoning map of the City of Cheyenne, establishing the zoning classification of MR medium-density residential for land being annexed to the City of Cheyenne, located south of and adjacent to Rollin Street, east of Cleveland Avenue.
All right, again, we have a new annexation. We need to give it a city zone, and that's MR. Is there anybody in the audience want to speak to a medium-density residential zone change, or establishment, I guess it's not a change? Hearing none. Mr. Seagrave.
Mr. Mayor, the recommendation of the Public Services Committee is to approve on second reading, and I so move.
Seconded by Mr. White.
Thank you, Mr. White.
Any comments for a member of the governing body? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ordinance is approved on second reading.
Number fourteen, ordinance on second reading, amending the official zoning map of the City of Cheyenne, establishing the zoning classification of AG agricultural for land being annexed to the City of Cheyenne, located southwest of and adjacent to the intersection of Holley Court and Ridge Road.
All right, this is a piece of property annexed a couple of months ago, and we still haven't got it as own, and so this is an effort to give it an AG or an agricultural zone. Is there anyone in the audience like to speak to that ordinance? All right, hearing none. Mr. Seagrave. Oh, did you want to speak?
Rebecca Merchi, thirty-two twenty-two, Thomas Road. I don't have any objection to the AG designation. I did just want to state for the record that I I'm curious as to why the development company hasn't requested an alternate zone by now. It appeared that the company was very eager to move forward with the development, and it appears that not getting the property zone would would delay this, so I just wanted to to make that comment. Thank you.
Anybody else in the audience? Hearing none. Mr. Seagrave.
Mr. Mayor, the recommendation of the Public Services Committee is to approve on second reading, and I so move.
Second.
Okay.
All of them signify by saying aye.
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 The zone change is approved on second reading.
Number fifteen, ordinance on second reading, amending the official zoning map of the City of Cheyenne, changing the zoning classification from LI Light Industrial and MR Medium Density Residential to MR Medium Density Residential for land located in lots fourteen and fifteen, Christensen Park.
All right, we have another zone change application. Is there anybody here to speak to this zone change? Hearing none. Mr. Seagrave.
Mr. Mayor, the recommendation of the Public Services Committee is to approve on second reading, and I so move.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. White. Dr. Rennie, did you? Very good. All right, is there anybody on the governing body want to speak to this zone change? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The ordinance, the zone change is approved on second reading.
Number sixteen, ordinance on second reading, amending section two point four point two, annexations of the Unified Development Code and creating section two point two eight, assigned zoning, clarified city zone assignment processes in concert with annexations and when removing city zone districts.
All right, that's a mouthful. Is there anybody here in the audience? Mr. White.
Uh, Mayor, through you, or Mayor and the governing body, Connor Way Planning and Development. Um, I just briefly want to go over what this what this text amendment does and what it looks like through the process. This is the current process, so an applicant submits an annexation application, and they also have to submit for a zoning map amendment. We've seen multiple of those on tonight's agenda. Zoning map amendment goes through planning commission before it comes to the governing body with the annexation. What this new proposed text amendment does is it basically has, it's called assigned zoning. So when the applicant submits for the annexation, staff looks at what the underlying county zone is and assigns it a zone that is based on the underlying county zone and the uses that are allowed in that county zone. That assigned zoning goes through planning commission, it still has a staff report, goes through the public process, and then comes before the governing body for three readings along with the annexation. If the developer does not like what that assigned zone is, so for instance, tonight, um, the property that is at being annexed off of Thomas and Ridge Road, in the county, it is zoned A1, so we would assign it agriculture with this assigned zoning. The developer wants to develop it with single-family homes, so they're proposing the MR zone, so they would, they would still basically submit for that zoning map amendment. So what this would do is you would have the annexation application submitted by the developer or even a property owner that's looking to just annex their home. We look at the assigned, we basically look at the underlying zoning and assign it a zone, and then they also submit for the zoning map amendment like they already do, and all three of those basically go through the process. Assigned zoning and zoning map amendment go to planning commission, and then they come before the governing body with the annexation. So what you would have on the agenda is the annexation, the assigned zoning, and then the zoning map amendment. So the governing body would basically look at approving the annexation, and then hopefully approve the assigned zoning with the annexation, and then determine if they would like to approve the zoning map amendment that the prospective property owner is looking at zoning the property themselves. What this does is it would hopefully prevent the case of what happened with the Ridge and Holland property, where there would always be some sort of zoning that goes with the annexation, and then if basically the governing body does not approve of the zoning map amendment submitted by the applicant, it defaults back to the assigned zone. If the governing body approves that zoning map amendment, it overrides the assigned zone and becomes the new zone of that property. Uh, that is the quick rundown of what that process would look like. I am available for any questions if anybody has any.
So, Mr. White, as I understand it, then the signed zone would basically be the closest thing to the zoning that's already allowed in the county. Is that correct?
Mayor, through you, that is correct. So we would basically, we have a, a policy document that was in everybody's packet that kind of looks at what the county zone is and what the most analogous city zone would be to that county zone based on uses.
So the development would be similar to what would have happened in the county had it not been annexed?
Mayor, through you, that is correct.
Okay, makes sense. Thank you. Okay, questions for our staff? Yes, Mr. Johnson.
So I guess when you guys assign it, and if the zoning map amendment, you know, fails what it had done in the past, there's not any reimbursement for costs that were paid into the city by the applicant since their zoning map amendment was not approved. Is that correct?
Mayor, through you, so I think to answer your question, so with the annexation and zoning map amendment, both of those are paid by basically the owner of the property or the applicant. The assigned zoning, there would be no fee. Um, it's basically staff just does that with the annexation. If the zoning map amendment is denied by the governing body, the applicant does not get reimbursed on that. That is an application fee that goes with the application. So they would still have the, hopefully, the annexed property in the assigned zone. They may have to come back before the governing body with a new zone at a later date and go back through the zoning map amendment process.
Okay, I guess I have a follow-up. So with the development committee, uh, community, when you guys kind of sales pitched, did they have any points of contention on, you know, on assigned zone, if in case theirs did fail through the governing body, did they offer any input?
Mr. White? Mayor, to you, we didn't have any input. Um, the way that staff looked at it was that because it's going off of the analogous zone based on what can be done in the county to what basically what the most analogous zone is in the city, um, it's to give it a zone, but they could basically, if they want to develop in the county, they could have, it's just giving it a zone closest to what they can then do in the city, um, with that process. And this, I should add, this policy document will be available on the website, it will be available with the annexation application, so they will know basically what that assigned zone will be moving forward, um, so they can choose to submit for that zoning map amendment at the beginning if they did want to.
Okay, thank you. I don't have anything else.
Thank you. Anybody else? Mr. Seagrave? No? Okay. Anybody else in the audience want to speak to this, um, an amendment to our Unified Development Code? Good evening again.
Peggy Escamia, thirty-two thirty-one, Smith Place. Um, I'm a little confused because as I understood the the process before was it was the assigned zone with the annexation, and then if the developer wanted something different, that would be a separate process. But as I'm hearing that tonight, that doesn't seem to be the case. So then, again, this, to me, would So then, again, this to me would um interfere with the protest position if if the residents in the area were opposed to that. Is that correct?
I think you misunderstood. So um they are two separate things. So they're gonna assign a zone as close to the county zone as 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 we have, okay? And if the developer wants something different than that, they will have to apply for a zone change separate uh from that, so.
So it is a separate product.
Yes.
Okay, all right. All right, that answered my question. Thank you.
Anybody else? Anybody else in the audience? All right, hearing none, Mr. Seagrave.
Mr. Mayor, the recommendation of the Public Services Committee is to approve on second reading, and I so move.
Seceded by Dr. Rennie. Comments for members of the governing body? Hearing none? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The ordinance is approved on second reading.
Number seventeen ordinance on second reading, admitting section two point two point one point C point five and two point two point two point C point six of the Unified Development Code, UDC, admitting protest petitions or zoning map amendments and planned developments.
All right. White?
Mayor and members of the governing body, Connor White, Planning and Development Department. Just want to go over a quick, brief, a couple of quick, brief um notes on this text amendment. Um, as Councilman Rennie did have a question at Public Service Committee about the twenty percent um difference between state statute and what the UDC has. So back when we did have the protest petition for the property at Ridge and Holland Court, uh, this map was created to basically show what the differences are between state statute and what the UDC has. Um, with the UDC, it is calculated basically as the crow flies. Um, and then it includes all properties within a hundred and forty feet and it excludes right of way. And then it is based on the number of um basically it's based on the number of property owners that are signing within that hundred and forty feet. With the proposed text amendment to reference state statute and go that direction, it would then, instead of being based on the number of landowners or the quantity of landowners, it's based on the land area. So for example, if a hundred thousand square feet of land area meets the definition of adjacent, a protest petition must uh only demonstrate that twenty percent or twenty thousand square feet of land area is owned by people protesting. So what this map is showing is that in both cases, whether it be state statute or the UDC, that protest petition would have been valid. Um, it met the threshold for the um land area, and it also met the percentage of landowners or the UDC. So with this text amendment, that's really what it's changing. It's changing the percentage and how that percentage is calculated. It does not change the fact that there's still eight required votes by the governing body on third reading. It does not change the fact that the public can still come out and voice opinions. Um, it's referencing state statute and then changing basically how the twenty percent is calculated. Uh, I am available for questions if there are any.
Does anyone have a question for our staff? Mr. Seagrave, do you?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
If I'm if I'm following correctly, under the old, under the current process, uh, you must have twenty percent of the property owners. Under this, it's twenty percent of the land, so theoretically, one person could control twenty percent under the proposal. So it's actually broader than the current because potentially just one person instead of, let's say, ten people uh could actually trigger this. Is that correct?
Charles Bloom, playing the Belmont Director, uh, Mayor through you too, Councilmember Seagrave. It is correct in some instances, but it could change based on the circumstances. Um, this map we threw on here doesn't have the legend on there, but I'll just sort of describe what you're seeing on this map, which might paint a better picture. Um, there is a light blue outline where you can see that dashed uh blue line that sort of goes beyond the dark red dotted line. That blue line, that is using the city's calculation. So it is um two hundred and forty feet excluding all intervening rights of way. So you draw a line, two hundred and forty feet. You get to a road, you stop measuring, you skip over, and you continue measuring till you get to two hundred and forty feet. And you keep on doing that with any intervening right of way. For example, if you look at Smith and Holland over there in the northwest corner, a little slice of of blue stripe goes on to the west side of Smith. Now, any property that is owned and is either within or bisected by that blue line, that counts as a property owner. You're looking for that twenty percent threshold per city ordinance. So in this case, I'm looking at city ordinance. You reached a number of fifty-five point three percent of all owners, that either have that line uh crossing their property or they're entirely contained. Now, the hashed area you see, that meets the statutory requirements for protest. Uh, that basically says you must meet two tests. Number one, you must be two hundred and forty feet excluding right of way, and you also must be adjacent. So if we look at the western edge there, there's a cul-de-sac south, south of Smith and north of Thomas. If you notice the the parcel labeled thirty-two oh eight, that it is within the two hundred and forty feet under state statute. However, it's not adjacent, so that wouldn't count. So if you meet that criteria of being adjacent and within two hundred and forty feet, that um is solely based on land area own.
Also, is it two hundred and forty or a hundred and forty feet?
Sorry, a hundred and forty.
Thank you, okay.
Apologies, uh, wrong, wrong number there. A hundred and forty feet, same same principle there. Um, so again, you can see that on the corner of Harvey and Ridge on the northeast corner where you have a property that is adjacent and within that one hundred and forty feet. Uh, if you're in a developed area where you have a lot of properties, like in this one, it might be more of a benefit for the smaller properties have an equal um vote, whereas the undeveloped property um immediately to the north of Thomas Heights, that one has a lesser vote because it is um because it is one large property owner. Where if you're looking at a uh property where it's subdivided into more, you might have a a different uh vote scenario. Um, in the end, this specific application, it met both thresholds. As you can see, under the warming state statute definition and their criteria, twenty-eight point one percent of all landowners mean that qualification um did assign a protest petition, triggering that vote on that end as well. So Councilmember Seagrave, it really can change based on the scenario, but uh usually if it's in uh an urban area where lots would be um equally subdivided into the same size, you should get to about the same uh quantity with either protest.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Seagrave.
Just a quick follow-up. Under the current system, if there were smaller property owners that qualified and one large property owner, if the large property owner wanted to protest, but the smaller ones did not, they may not meet that threshold. Or under the new system, it could be either way. Either a lot of smaller property owners could meet the threshold and not the large, or the large and none of the small. So you, to me, the new system is broader. It allows more options for different sized property owners to participate. Am I processing this correctly?
Mayor through to Councilmember Seagrave. Um, that is correct. That that is an accurate way to process the scenarios.
Thank you.
Mr. Rebel, did you have a comment, sir?
Yes, just a quick question. So if we, as we've been uh annexing in stuff uh that butts up against the county, so if one of the county landowners, again, has a large piece of property adjacent to that, are they allowed to protest this as a county? Resident?
Mayor, I remember, Mayor through you, to Councilmember Royball. Uh, yes, they would be eligible for protest under the city ordinance as presently written and under state statute.
Dr. Rennie.
That's not fair because we can't protest their property. Anyway, that wasn't my question. Um, so my understanding with this is the the changes, first of all, it pretty much puts us with the same language or same wording as the state statute in regard to this issue, correct?
Correct.
Okay. And the second part is that the the challenge now comes not with the assignment of the the protest challenge comes with i- any change, so um, for the people, if we use this piece of property as an example, now that we've zoned it AG, then it, then the people in the neighborhood would still have the right to protest, assuming that the uh landowner wants to do something besides graze horses up there, which.
Mayor through you to Councilman Rennie. That is correct. So with this text amendment, what it's affecting is the zoning map amendment. So if we go back to the previous text amendment, the zoning map amendment is what it's affecting, which is our current process. And that is what it, basically that's what the protest petition is for, is for zoning map amendments.
Correct.
So now that this property is zoned, well, as long as it gets through third reading and it's approved, this property should be zoned AG. If the developer comes back with a new proposed zone, that's a zoning map amendment. Protest petition could still be submitted under even this new text amendment.
But, Mr. White, I think the key thing is, is the assigned, you can't protest the assigned um zone. So whatever it was going to be in the county, you can't protest what was already there, correct?
Mayor through you, that would be correct.
But my point in making this, Mr. Mayor, and to my colleagues, is that um, there was some concern by the people in the neighborhood that we were taking their right to protest away. And as I said, because we're contemplating signing this in AG zone, they would, if any change out of AG, they would have the ability to protest again.
Anything else, Mr. White, Mr. Bloom? Any other thing for our staff? All right, how about the audience? Um, we have an amendment uh on second reading. Anybody in the audience want to speak to this? Good evening, sir.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Um, there's two points I wanted to make on this. Jason Stephen, Bedrock Development. Um, two points that I wanted to make on this one was about changing this over to the state statute, and I think Mr. Seagrave said it probably best. Um, that it actually, I think, makes a better system for for both sides, to be honest with you. Every scenario I can come up with, whether it's a number of lots or size, the size seems to just come out better for everybody. Um, but there's also the protest piece of this that wasn't talked about yet, and I'm not sure if the staff was still going to talk about that, but I did want to make a couple of comments about that.
Go ahead, sir.
Um, so another piece of this was uh standardizing the pro- the protest portion. Um, I can just go back to my experience on the property that is shown directly up there, and I did bring the protest with me in case somebody would like to look at it. Um, I don't believe that in our case, the protest was um done in a fair manner, and that the descriptions that were used during the protest or on the protest itself that had the signatures were uh not accurate, they were actually inaccurate, and that some of the protests that were signed were actually not even the same wording. So I would just like to say I'm very much in favor of standardizing that process and that the city would have a standard format for for doing that, just so that we make sure that the information that is being provided to the public is actually factual information.
Thank you. And for the audience's sake, um, if this ordinance passes, we'll have a city form that will be required for protest that will um say what the protest is, but then also all the things that are allowed within that pro- within that zone area, so people have a real clear understanding of what they're protesting. Thank you. Anybody else in the audience want to speak to this amendment? Good evening.
Amber Reagan, three, two, two, five, Smith Place. I guess I just have a question about how often this happens that um a petition protest is filed.
I can tell you in my twenty-some years, uh, Dr. Rennie, I don't know, but maybe half a dozen times that I can remember. It's it's a very, it's not a very large occurrence.
So I guess I see this as kind of a lot of confusion for something that doesn't happen very often. And maybe it's going to happen more in the future as you're annexing more properties, but it just seems kind of not citizen-friendly, I guess, to me.
Can you share with me why you say that? Because um I'd like to understand that.
Well, first of all, it's very confusing. And so.
The current process, ma'am, or the new process?
No, the the new process. Um, and I'm also kind of confused in this portion where it says um, you know, a petition cannot be filed when changing regulations, not establish establishing regulations. This means that a petition could not be filed against a zoning map amendment or planned development that accompanies an annexation. So is that saying that if there's, so you're annexing Holland and Thomas or Holland and Smith, we can't petition that zone?
Well, I think what we heard from our staff was that the uh, if we could go back in time, we would give that an AG, an agricultural zone, just like it has in the county now. We would, yes. We'd establish that as the zone.
Okay.
You can't protest that because that's what's already there in the county.
Okay.
But if the developer wanted to change it from that to something, you know, like MR or something else, then the protest could happen.
Okay.
So it doesn't make sense to allow you to protest what's already there. It's already agricultural. It can be developed as agriculture in the county. It would be developed as agriculture in the city, so there would not be a protest for the existing condition.
Okay, so I feel like, I mean, that saying all this wording to this is confusing for anyone that's coming in wanting to protest a petition. And so I think if when it only happens a dozen times, why change something that isn't broken right now?
I think I just heard from the developer, it was broken, and he's asking for it to be changed, ma'am. Um, so.
Citizens, I think, are, I mean, he's one developer that it happened to.
Okay, fair enough.
The other developers, do they have comments on this also?
Appreciate your comments, ma'am. Thank you. Anybody else in the audience want to speak to this? Good evening again. Push the button. There you go.
Rebecca Merchi, thirty-two, twenty-two, Thomas Road. Um, as I understand it, with the new format, there would not be, because it would be a standardized format generated by the city, there wouldn't be a place for the residents to state what it is that they're protesting. It would be a designation of the zone being requested and what could occur under that zoning. Is that correct?
Mr. White, I believe that's correct. Yep, he's nodding his head. But isn't that what you're protesting, ma'am? You're protesting the zone change and what could possibly go there?
It's this specific parts of what could go there, like with the NR three request, my protest was against the high-density apartments. It would not have been against a school. It would not have been against a church. And so with this new format, I would have to, in order to protest the apartments, I would have to protest everything under NR three, which is not what I would desire to do. Um, I also had some concerns about some of the language that was used. Um, it said that the staff preferred option C, which now also includes part of option B, because it removes obstacles to development. It further stated, a few select owners of land near a requested zoning map amendment proposal can unduly affect the outcome of an amendment that is desired by the community as a whole. There were more than a few landowners on the petition. We actually had talked to people throughout the neighborhood, and there were ninety signatures, although they did not factor into that twenty percent um of adjacent and that sort of thing, but they did give an idea of that for that entire community, we were not in favor of the apartments. Um, and the community as a whole that presented at the meetings in favor of the NR three were developers, realtors, and Chamber of Commerce members who would benefit from but not directly be impacted on a daily basis from the proposed development. Um, you know, it's there are a few of you that are making the decision on whether to accept a zone or not, but it impacts the people in the neighborhood on a daily basis for years to come, and I think that really needs to be respected. We seem to be going out of our way to respect a developer, but not necessarily the residents of the neighborhood. Thank you so much. but not necessarily the residents of the neighborhood. Thank you so much for your time.
Yeah. Anybody else want to speak? Mr. White.
Mayor, through you to the governing body, I just want to clarify a couple of things when it comes to protest petitions, because it has been brought up between the zone versus the uses. As we had just heard, the protest petition provision is within zoning map amendment. So it is specifically to the zone. It doesn't matter what the uses are going to be when you're submitting that protest petition. It is to the zone and any use that can be in that zone, which is why staff was recommending this form is to make it specific to the zone. If there was a protest petition for uses, it would be under Article Five, which is where the uses are located. There is no such provision. This provision is strictly for the zone of the property and what it is being changed to. It is not for what uses could go there. Again, which is why we're presenting this text amendment the way that it is.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Seagrave.
Maybe a point of clarification. By protesting the zone, theoretically, they're protesting everything in there, but they have to protest the zone and everything in there, because once it's zoned, anything that qualifies, whether it's a church or a school or an apartment complex, once it's zoned, anything that qualifies in there can be built with the rest of the process involved. So you are protesting the zone and everything that can occur in there. Because if you don't want a high-rise apartment there, then it cannot be zoned for any other use within that zone, because it's zoned, it's not for use. And I think that's what Mr. White was just trying to say. Thank you.
Mayor, through you. Another clarification. With with the zone. Sorry, lost my train of thoughts. Actually, I don't know if I have anything else to add.
That's fine. If it comes back to you, come back up. Ma'am, did you want to come speak? Maybe Connor will get us. Oh, Connor, hang on a second. Mr. Leiborn had a question for you.
Connor, now, my understanding is that we would have a standardized form for that petition process. But that would not preclude anyone who was circulating that petition from whatever information they wanted to give to the person considering signing the petition. That would, that would not be an official function of the city, but the signature on that standardized form is what we're really talking about. But it's not going to take away any ability of anyone that wants to do the protest petition, present the information as they see it. Is that correct?
Mr. White.
Mayor, through you, that actually, Mr. Leiborn's question brought my thoughts back. That is, that is correct. Basically, even with the standardized form, those citizens can still provide to their friends or their neighbors the information that they have. It's just with the form, it has the information of what that zone is. So when somebody is signing it, they can take that into account as well as what their neighbors are saying. What I want to mention is that even with this form, this does not take away the fact that those neighbors or citizens can still come to these public meetings and voice those opinions specific to that project. That does not take that away. They can still, as we've seen tonight, there isn't a protest petition against the text amendments. People are still here voicing their concerns. It'd work the exact same way even with this text.
Thank you. Ma'am, please.
Peggy Escamia, thirty-two, thirty-one, Smith Place. I have the form here and on the, the second part, it says the intent of the zone district is. So at that, is that where it would be a little more specific as to what might be going in there? Or is it still just, because up above it says the following uses are as such, and then the intent of the zone district is.
Mr. White, do you want to answer that question?
Mayor, through you, Connor White, Planning and Development Department. So currently on this rough form that I had created for this, the intent portion basically comes right out of the UDC of what the intent of that zone district is. So with the MR zone, the intent of it is to provide a mix of resident, a mix of different residential types, and it has basically what the intent of that zone district is. That's what would be in the intent. The top part is basically lists out the brief, kind of what uses would be allowed in that zone district. We can modify this form. I wouldn't say this form is set in stone, but that is currently what we have is the zone, basically what uses are allowed and what the intent of that zone district is, so that anybody signing it knows what uses can go in the zone district and what the intent of that district is.
Peggy, did that answer your question?
I'm not quite sure. So is that, is that basically then would, okay, so this could be apartments, it could be twin homes, blah, blah, blah. And then the intent of it would be.
If it's medium density residential, a mixture of housing units to provide housing for our community, or it'd be a simple sentence or a paragraph that would talk about the, the intent that the UDC has for that district.
But it wouldn't be specific to what.
No, ma'am, it would not. That would be what your petition carriers would probably have to share.
All right. Thank you.
All right.
Just one more thing.
Yes, ma'am.
I would like for the form to have something on there as that would be a little more specific, a place where we could be a little more specific as to what it is, even though we can say it to whoever's signing the petition, but that way you folks would know this is what we are really protesting.
Sure. And Peggy, honestly, you know, in the case of your situation in your neighborhood, the developer came with a really well-thought-out plan as to what they were going to do and they were very upfront about that. A lot of times we don't know, and the developer doesn't tell us. They just, you know, they're annexed a piece of property, they want to do a zone change, and they don't share what their intent is. Maybe they don't even know at this time. So I'm not sure we can do that, but in this case, we had a really good idea because they presented with you guys the, the visual. So that was, I would say, a kind of a rarity. We don't normally see that at that, at that stage of a, of a development.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Jason. Mr. Stevens.
Mayor, Council, just Jason Stephen again, Bedrock Development. Just real quick, I just wanted to read a couple of things of what I'm trying to not have as officially on a petition. So this petition that we've been talking about says things such as this rezon construction will create an increase of four hundred plus people and vehicles, which is unsubstantiated, decrease in neighborhood property value, increase traffic parking problems, noise pollution, drainage issues, private privacy issues and deterioration of neighborhood. So when somebody goes out into a neighborhood and presents a petition to a bunch of people in that neighborhood, they're reading this as an official document. I think it's much, much easier to, to convince them of a lot of these things, whether they're true or they're not. And so all I'm really asking is if we have a standardized form, hopefully in the future, we will be able to have a little bit better understanding of what it is it's actually being petitioned against as opposed to something specific such as this.
Mr. Leiborn, did you have a question?
Thank you. Mr. Stevens, I believe earlier you said you were willing to provide a copy of the petition that you found to be inaccurate. Is that correct?
Yes, yes. Through you, Mayor Collins, Mr. Leiborn, yes.
So I'd like a copy of that. I haven't seen that yet, so.
Okay.
You could get it to the council office or email it to me. I'd like to read that.
I'd be happy to send you a copy.
All right. We're still on the public part of the conversation here. All right, last time, please.
Just real quick, on the protest petition, when we were generating it, we followed the guidelines that were provided by the city of what we were to put on the petition. And also, you know, the, the inaccuracies have never really been clarified to us. We took the information that was given at the AVI meeting, and then we took the guidelines that were provided by the city, and that's how we generated that form. The first form, we actually put out a, a form originally that just said we are against the NR three development, and that turned out to not be a petition that we could submit. So we redid it and we went back through everybody again. Thank you.
Anybody else in the audience? Okay. Mr. Seagrave.
Mr. Mayor, the motion to approve on second reading died due to a lack of a second at the Public Services Committee meeting. Therefore, there is no recommendation. However, for the sake of discussion, I move to approve on second reading.
Second. Seconded by Mr. Roywell. Comments from members of the governing body.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Johnson.
So Connor, if you want to come up here, please.
Just ask your questions.
Sorry. So the mayor kind of alluded to as far as like the specifics of this. So what we've seen happen in the county is that a lot of things were zoned in the nineteen seventies, and it just basically sat at that zone regulation. And then forty years later, when they actually decided to develop, it was zoned correctly. So people that could have protested forty years ago probably, you know, didn't have any idea what they were actually doing. And so pretty much we're still following, you know, the state guidelines even on our own that, you know, say you were to go to NR three, but nothing was to be built for forty years. You know, we'd kind of stand by that. And so they really have no avenues except for at current time or anything in the future, if they just sat on a piece of land for, say, like four decades. Is that correct?
Mayor, through you, that, that would be correct.
Other questions or comments from members of the governing body? So just so I understand, the motion before us, just so I understand, because there were some, some questions, motion before us would be to adopt a uniform form that would be created by the city, that would be required for all protest petitions, and that we would be following the state statute moving forward. Is that correct? Madam, okay. Any other comments from member of the governing body? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. And those opposed.
No.
Oh, Dr., or Dr. Aldridge is a no. The ordinance is approved on second reading.
Item is number eighteen. Ordinance on first reading, creating chapter eight point six eight Camping in Public Places of Title Eight Health and Safety of the Municipal Code of the City of Cheyenne, Wyoming, prohibiting the act of camping on public property as specified.
All right, we refer this one to the Finance Committee.
I was just curious, why is that going to finance? Does this involve a contract or money?
Good question.
Mr. Mayor, through you, Chris Jones, City Clerk. After having a conversation with the city attorney, due to the fines that are attached to this ordinance, if there were penalties, that results in revenue.
Would you prefer it to go someplace else, or?
I, I didn't realize that, you know, it had an impact on the budget. And I'm not sure finding the homeless is going to have an impact.
I'm going to send this one to the Public Service Committee then.
Thank you. Number nineteen, resolution approving water services by outside user agreement for properties to be known as Iron Horse Third Filing, Laramie County, Wyoming, generally located southeast of West Riding Club Road and Heinz Boulevard, postponed from June twelfth, twenty twenty-three.
All right. Is there anyone in the audience would like to speak to the Iron Horse outside water user agreement? And good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. My name is Matt Kaufman. Here representing Iron Horse Capital, the developer. With me in the audience are a few members of our development group, Mr. Rick Thompson, Lucas Buckley, and Casey Palmer. Mr. Mayor, members of council, you might recall a couple of weeks ago, we were here before you and we had asked for a two-week postponement. The issue at that time was relatively new development in these discussions that were ongoing is the potential creation of an assessment within our statutory-created district that we could utilize within a proposed outside user agreement to offset revenue loss to the City of Cheyenne. We've been working on that very diligently. We're very close to that. We have come across a few additional issues that we have to deal with, frankly, legally in Wyoming statute eighteen, twelve, one oh two, which is the authorizing statutes surrounding special improvement districts. So at this time, Mr. Mayor, we're asking for one last and final postponement, just to allow us to complete that. We think it's to the benefit of the council, so that when we come forward this last and final time, we're prepared to answer any and all questions about this potential outside user agreement and, and what an agreement could contain and might look like.
Thank you, Mr. Kaufman. Anybody in, on the council want to ask a question of the applicant? Thank you, sir. Thank you. Anybody else in the audience want to speak to this outside user agreement? Hearing none, Mr. Seagrave.
Mr. Mayor, the recommendation of the Public Services Committee is to adopt, and I so move.
Seconded by Dr. Rennie.
Mr. Mayor, I move to postpone until the July tenth, twenty twenty-three meeting of the governing body.
Second. Seconded by Mr. Cook. Comments from members of the audience on the postponement. Hearing none, how about from the governing body? Hearing none. All those in favor of the postponement, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post, the postponement is approved for two weeks.
Mr. Mayor, just, there were a lot of items pulled. I think I got them all marked, but moving forward from this point, if I forget one, please catch my attention. But next item is number twenty-one, resolution authorizing the City of Cheyenne Board of Public Utilities to discharge uncollectible debts in the amount of seventy-nine thousand, one hundred eighty-five dollars and forty-three cents pursuant to Wyoming statute sixteen dash four to five oh two.
All right. Is there anyone in the audience want to speak to this item? Mr. Bowen, welcome.
Mr. Mayor, City Council, Brad Bowen, Administration Manager, Cheyenne Board of Public Utilities. In front of you is a resolution to approve a bad debt write-off in the current year. In the current year, we're requesting to be able to write off more than the one year that we normally request from you as our write-off to be more in line with the city's account receivable balance. And currently, we, our accounts receivable balance includes all receivables up to state statute of limitations on each item. We're wanting to be more conservative on the generally accepted accounting side of things and only have four years worth of receivables on our books. Of the years that are in front of you, if you look at the write-offs, we are averaging a point oh six percent bad debt compared to our total revenue, compared to a national average over point six percent. So we've got really good collections, but the items that we're requesting to have you write off in the current year, we are still working with our collection company for any receivable that is less than the statute of limitations associated with those. With that, any questions? I'm happy to answer.
Questions for staff from the Board of Public Utilities.
Mr. Mayor.
Dr. Rennie.
I have two questions, Mr. Mayor. One, was there any consideration ever to turn these over to collection agency or has that been done?
These have been, Mayor, through you, Dr. Rennie, these have been turned over to the collection agency. They're turned over to the collection agency closer to, if I remember the memo correctly, in the hundred and twenty day mark. So these have been being worked by the collection agency for multiple years at this point.
Now, I understand how that works. Sometimes they just tell you, they can't, they're not getting anywhere. And then my last question is, does the Board of Public Utilities have the ability to cross-check these names so that we don't give service to somebody else at a later time?
Mr. Bowen, that's a good question.
Mr. Mayor, through you, to Dr. Rennie, we do our best at the current moment to connect a prior user with a current user. We try to carry customer numbers between their current address and their future address. The thing that we run into that I'm going to say is can be a difficulty sometimes is a resident sets up service and cancels service at the exact same time. So their canceled service is the one, when they get built on the next billing cycle, they throw that bill away because they're getting built on their current residence. And then we have to go backwards to try and take a location ID crosswords to the new customer account. But anytime we can, we do our best to transfer previous balances.
Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Any other questions for staff? All right. Anybody else in the audience want to speak to this discharge of uncollectible debts? Hearing none, Mr. White.
Mr. Mayor, the recommendation to adopt failed at the Finance Committee, therefore there is no recommendation. However, for the sake of discussion, for the sake of discussion, I move to approve.
Seconded by Mr. Seagrave. Comments from members of the governing body. Hearing none, all those.
Mr. Mayor, I have Dr. Aldridge would like to comment.
Dr. Aldridge.
Thank you, Mayor Collins, through you. I did have an opportunity to visit with Mr. Bowen and with Mr. Brooks this afternoon, and the challenge is that there are not unique identifiers for the. um, with Mr. Brooks this afternoon. And um, the challenge is that there are not unique identifiers for these customers. We discussed several possibilities and I know that they're working hard to try and prevent this from happening on a continual basis. But um, I just, I'm really struggling with the idea that we're raising rates for all of our customers. And we have customers that we cannot, for whatever reason, commercial and individuals who aren't paying their water bills. Um, I did visit with them. I will be a no vote tonight and I'm looking forward to being able to work with them to make sure this doesn't happen in the future.
Any other comments from members of the governing body? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
Dr. Aldridge is a no. Our resolution is adopted.
Item is twenty-two, resolution authorizing the lawful possession of open containers of alcoholic liquor within the downtown development district boundaries for rectifiers and distillers for seven specified dates in twenty twenty-three.
All right, is there anybody in the audience here to speak to this resolution? Hearing none. Mr. White, do you have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, the recommendation of the Finance Committee is to adopt and I so move.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Royble. Comments from members of the governing body?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Leyborn.
I speak in opposition to this resolution for several reasons. And it really is a interesting question. In the fourth whereas clause, it states, whereas some businesses within the downtown development district boundaries manufacture or rectify alcoholic liquor for purchase by consumers. It's my understanding that there is only one business that meets these qualifications. Is that correct?
To my knowledge, that is correct. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Mayor, Chris Jones, City Clerk, to Councilman Leyborn, at this time, that is correct within this area.
And further, uh, Madam Clerk, is it correct that that this means that uh, this business can, uh, in his case, I believe it's whiskey that they manufacture there? No? What is it?
Mr. Mayor, through you, vodka.
Vodka, well, it's um, hard liquor, I guess you could call it. Is that fair? So that means that the other legal bars in the downtown cannot provide that type of alcoholic beverage in a cup to go. Is that right?
Mr. Mayor, through you, that is correct.
Well, obviously, uh, members of the governing body, we have a special consideration for one establishment. And that one establishment, uh, certainly um, has every reason to exist and sell their product legally. But when you make this type of a determination and have no notification on any of the cups as to where that drink came from in the seventy-four block EDA district. Um, I really question the control there. And I would also refer to the uh, further resolves section that talks about encouraging their customers to comply with all laws, rules and regulations and make every offer effort to ensure the continued safety of the community and educate and inform their customers that no outside alcoholic beverage, wine or malt liquor may be distributed brought into or consumed in an open container within the downtown development district. Well and good, um, I'm not sure that it's very realistic. Uh, certainly, anyone can, uh, and anyone that maybe wants to bend the law or do what they want um, can pull into the parking structure, mix a drink in any sort of cup and go out on the street without any real ability to tell where it came from. Whether it was vodka from this distillery or a bottle they've got. I, I just believe the control here is really lacking. And we keep expanding and expanding this whole open container situation. I think that uh, the benefit in this case is obviously to one establishment. And I really don't think that they're going to be able to educate and inform their customers much. I think, I think people that want to uh, drink on the street and have that opportunity to do it uh, under this type of arrangement, uh, makes it very difficult for the police to enforce. How, how do you tell what's in that cup?
Mr. Mayor, for clarification, I just see notification that there is also whiskey distilled there. I apologize. I was incorrect on that.
Well, I think I've made my point, uh, members of the council, and I hope that we are, uh, if you're going to do this. Let's have a level playing field here. No special advantage for this one establishment. Certainly, maybe at some later point, other people might want to open a distillery, that's fine. But the lack of control here, the lack of, and the large area. Maybe we haven't had too many problems thus far, but um, I think I've made my point and that's why I'm voting no. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Seagrave.
Two quick points. First of all, I, I agree with the Councilman Leyborn. We're picking winners and losers. That's not, that's not how I envision us operating. We're selecting one provider and giving them a distinct advantage. I think that's wrong on many, many fronts. Second of all, I've been told that the reason for doing this for seven events is to be able next year to come back and say, well, look, we did it seven times last year and there weren't very many problems, so let's go three sixty-five, just like we did with beer. That's what this seven-day process is all about. And I don't like that. I, I think we need to have a discussion about what we want to be in our downtown when we grow up. Are we, are we just ready to have a booze all, all the time? Do we want people just beer and wine and vodka, just twenty-four seven? Is that what we're after? That's not what I'm after. I'm totally opposed to this for a lot of reasons, and I really think it should be defeated. Thank you.
Other comments from members of the governing body? Mr. White.
Mr. Mayor, uh, thank you. Um, I agree with my colleague, Mr. Leyborn. Um, you know, I've supported this type of initiative in the past. I, I was a co-sponsor when we did it as a pilot during COVID. Um, I was a co-sponsor when we, uh, expanded that for the summer after we were done with COVID and I supported the year round. But I said on record at the time, malt beverage was as far as I was going to go. I understand, uh, Mr. Lester, I appreciate the conversation that I had with him. I understand his reasoning for, uh, wanting to be treated just like everybody else. But I said malt beverage was as far as I was going to go and that's as far as I'm going to go. So I'll be a no tonight as well.
Comments?
Brian, did you want to go first?
I, yeah, if, if that's right.
Please.
Mayor, through you, I'm not sure if, if the city clerk is able to answer this and, but we can, we can try, right?
Just ask your question.
So, thank you, Mr. Mayor, um. Madam Clerk, I'm, I'm just, I'm curious. So obviously, um, this, uh, this entity, they have a distillery license. They don't have any other type of liquor license.
Mr. Mayor, through you, I, I believe that is correct.
Mr. Mayor, just a, a few follow-ups, please, if I may. Um, so I, and, and, and again, I don't know if this is conjecture. I don't know if this is just anecdotal information or what, but um, I'm assuming with a distillery license that there's a lot of follow-up, uh, with that, as there would be. A follow-up and enforcement, I guess, just checking on the operation, what's going on as far as there would be very similarly to a microbrewery permit, permit. Is that, Madam Clerk?
Mr. Mayor, through you, to Councilman Cook, um, all the applications are, are vetted. Um, when they submit them through the Wyoming Liquor Division, the city and also any other requirements such as this would go through the state. When they are initially here, when they come up for renewal, if there are any issues at that time, we, we resubmit that, that information back out to the liquor division to have those renewal applications certified before we move forward with them.
It's the same threshold as with everybody else.
That is correct.
Um, one last one, and thank you, um, Madam Clerk, uh, one last one, uh, Mr. Mayor. Um, so then, under a distillery, distiller, distillery license. Um, I had just heard some conjecture, frankly, that, uh, they may or may not be or recently were not distilling their own, distilling their own product. Do we, do we know that?
Mr. Mayor, through you, I am not aware of that. Um, if, if that is a valid complaint, it would, we would definitely follow up on that. I have not been aware of that to this point.
So I, just so I'm, just so I'm clear, um, that, uh, under this license, much like it is a, a make, microbrewery license. You can only sell what you make, basically.
That is my understanding correct.
Thank you.
Mr. Johnson?
Okay. So on this one, just like Councilman White said, um, when I met with the owners of Chronicles. I told him that I was a no. Unfortunately, in my professional life, I have to come up with options. And so, um, as far as the seven dates, this was something that I kind of dealt with as a compromise. Because I was, I told him he didn't have the votes on council to do hard liquor. I told him that I was not in favor of this because I believed, as Councilman White said, that we had taken this basically as far as it could go. He did bring up also the same concerns in regards to, you know, the alcohol by volume in regards to his whiskey and vodka compared to a higher level. Um, you know, beer, ale, whatnot. So what we did is we came up to the compromise. In regards to, uh, the, uh, special consideration, um, I actually, there was an original draft on this that I proofread. Um, where it stated it chronicled by name and as Councilman Leyborn and Councilman Seagrave thought that this singled out an agency. That language had to be changed because it's considered special legislation under the Wyoming Constitution under Article Three, states or statutes twenty-seven. So we actually couldn't put a specific name of an agency in the resolution because that would feel favoritist. At the time, they are currently the only distillery in the downtown core. That is not their fault. If there was others, that's why this provision was written the way it was. For the Wyoming Constitution, we had to lay this out that it basically was for all comers, regardless if there was one or twenty distilleries in the downtown area. We've had to, uh, literally draft the language as this. So as far as, um, concerns for the future. It is not my intent to, um, go forward in the summer of twenty twenty-four without any kind of data. As I told, uh, the Chronicles Distillery individuals that I wanted to do a trial base. I have talked to the, uh, Police Department in regards to hard alcohol and how this was going to be done. That's what was said at committee by Captain James, that they kind of have changed the dynamic on how citations are issued for, um, public intoxication. That that's how they're really filed. They're not really filed as an open container law. They're filed more as public intoxication. You're absolutely correct. If you're in publicly intoxicated and if you're dumb enough to actually say that you made your own mixed drink in the parking lot. Then yeah, the police officers will enforce in quarterly. But if you happen to say that you purchased, you know, any kind of beverage, whether it be from the breweries or from the full retail licenses and or in this case, the distillery, if you actually admit that that's where you come. Then it could become a liability concern for that merchant that they over served you and which would be in violation of their tips training. So we all know about free gaming in the parking lot. That is not the fault of the merchant as well. There's Mr. Moser who in the back who taught me tips training, um, let me know this. I'm sure all of you up here have done tips training at one time or another and have received the same information as me. But I did have to literally make some kind of appeal to Chronicles to show that I was willing to make at least some motion forward. And I told him that he was at the head of the governing body on their votes, that he may not have the potential to get this passed, but I was willing to try. I unfortunately did not, uh, sponsor this. It was, uh, picked up by Councilman Royble because I didn't answer my email fast enough. But that is a clarification on how we got to the place that we are today.
Other comments from members of the governing body?
Mr. Mayor.
Dr. Rennie.
I have, um, a couple of questions. A question, uh, one question is they would still, whether this ordinance is approved or not. They would still be able to apply for a special permit at any time, would they not?
Mr. Mayor, through you, that is correct. Under the resolution allowing open containers for rectifiers and distillers. The business isn't required to pull additional permits as they aren't selling or serving outside of their licensed building. There are permits that they are eligible to get for a scenario where they're selling outside of their business and they're limited to those. And I don't remember that exact number.
By selling outside of the business, does that mean on the sidewalk or does that mean off-site?
Mr. Mayor, through you, my understanding would be like in the little courtyard back there, they would be able to per, pull a permit to sell out there.
Hey, and Mr. Mayor, the, um, thank you to the clerk for that. And my other question was then I don't necessarily have an issue if they have a courtyard or if they want to have a little patio area out in front of the Asher Building. Um, but currently without this resolution, they're not allowed to do that. Is that correct?
Madam Clerk?
I'm sorry, could you repeat the question? And the other, it's twelve permits.
Without the passage of this resolution, without a special permit, they, if they wanted to have um, a little seated area outside the Asher Building on, on the premises, are they not allowed to do that?
They are and they have pulled those permits in the past. And that is an allowance of twelve per calendar year licensing year.
Um, again, Mr. Mayor, thank you to the city clerk. I, I think our system, our system allows them to go as far as I would like them to. I have no problems if they want to have a outside seating area, you know, that's adjacent to the Asher Building. I not real, I'm not going to vote to have them just people wandering around town with mixed drinks.
Other comments from members of the governing body?
Mr. Mayor, Dr. Aldridge has a question.
Uh, Mayor Collins, through you, I just wanted to, uh, confirm with, uh, when I heard um, the city clerk say is that they already can do this up to twelve times per year. Um, so I think that mechanism is there. Um, I know that it's an additional permit fee, um, each time that they do that. But, um, I think that that gives us a little bit more, um, say in that process. And so, um, because they already have that mechanism there and they can utilize that, um, I'll be a no vote on this tonight.
Clerk, was that what you said?
Mr. Mayor, that, that, let me clarify. They can get a permit to, to sell adjacent on their property but not for open container purposes of what this resolution is putting forward. They would not be able to sell their alcohol and have folks wander around or go other places. It has to be adjacent to their property as specified in the special permits.
Dr. Aldridge, is that clear, right?
Oh, that, that does. Um, I know that one of the items on here is actually, um, Cheyenne Day. Uh, when they have a rodeo of some sort, um, on near by their property, I'm guessing on Fifteenth Street. So, uh, Chris, would something like that be covered under, uh, the permits they're able to pull?
Mr. Mayor, through you, I'd have to do a little more research. I don't know how far off, I don't believe they can go off the premise. If they hold the rodeo, as if I recall correctly, they've done that in the past on their property. Then that the permit would allow for that, but not in the street and going other places.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Eskel. Uh, Mr. Mayor, through you, since I'm the only councilman, I guess, that hasn't spoken on it other than the sponsor. Uh, we'll probably have to revisit it going forward because there's at least two other businesses that are looking at the Reed Avenue Corridor for potential distilleries. And if we look at it from a business standpoint, as far as what a level playing field is. So the difference between a distillery and say a bar that's going to pour a mixed drink. The distillery is actually the business of making it, not in the dis, business of pouring it. So going forward with, uh, only having one, I know it, it sounds like we are being favored, showing some favoritism there. But the, the state laws still apply, whether it's someone that's drunk and disorderly will be arrested whether they drink three IPAs or one drink that's made at, at the distillery. They would still be under the same laws of DUI, whether they drank three IPAs and one drink at a distillery. So those arguments, I think, don't hold on the business side of the argument. So if we're talking about a level playing field and being fair, this is certainly going to come back to us again. And, uh, I want to maintain a business-friendly atmosphere. So I would be a yes.
Mr. Leyborn, did you have one more comment?
Yes, I do. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, in the discussion that we've had, and it's extensive and I appreciate it, there's a lot of confusion here. This is an attempt to clarify and, um, make it clear as to which date. So that perhaps. so that perhaps we could have some sort of data about how it works. I don't think that's realistic. And I furthermore feel very strongly that our our central business district and the and the businesses and the people that are there, if we're talking about being business friendly, don't need people coming and going throughout that district with a drink in their hand. Thank you.
Any other comments? Are the motion to approve?
Mayor? Through you, um, I guess the reason I sponsored it was because, number one, they came and asked me to. Um, I am firmly believer in letting adults be adults. We haven't had a whole lot of problems with the malt liquor. And there's, like we talked about on the radio this morning, there's always that guy out there. We haven't seen that guy. We have responsible adults come downtown, they go to the, they go to the, um, Fridays on the Plaza, they go to parades, they do all that. And we don't see them, they they're enjoying a drink socially. Yeah, I think the only thing we run into with the problem with the problem drunks is some of the guys that live downtown in the in the alleys or in the garages. That's the one we're getting problems with. So my thought is, you know, level playing field, we're talking about only one customer, one person. There's going to be more. And if, you know, you want to make it level, let's make an amendment that all the the regular license holders can serve regular hard liquor out there. Because at this point, the regular license holders are the thirty six, how many we have downtown? Ten?
License holders for what? Excuse me?
The retail liquor license.
Retail liquor license.
I don't have that data with me.
But let's just say ten. Well, when we picked the DDA and we made that year round, we gave them a leg up on everybody else in town. You know, so my thought is, let's, I'm gonna, I'm gonna be a yes vote. But my thought is, let's let adults be adults. Thank you.
All right, we have a motion, a second. Any last comments? Hearing none. All those in favor of approving the open container option, please signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
See the hands of the nose, please. Mr. Seagrave, Dr. Rennie, Mr. Labor, Mr. White and Dr. Aldridge, the resolution fails.
Our next item is number twenty nine C, memorandum of understanding between the City of Cheyenne and the Wyoming Department of Transportation for the city's Child's Draw South Ribuary Enhancements Project.
All right, is there anybody in the audience who want to speak to this memorandum of understanding? All right, hearing none. Mr. White?
Mr. Mayor, the recommendation of the Finance Committee is to approve in an amount of one hundred fifteen thousand and I so move.
Seconded by Mr. Labor. Comments from members of the governing body?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Labor?
I'm certainly in favor of this memorandum because of all the effort that the Engineering Office and Mr. Cobb as and the consultants in the design of that retention facility have put in. And I I do recognize that we are now coming up on two hundred thousand dollars of city expense that we've had to make in in a situation that should have never happened. That was, and it certainly was long before Mr. Cobb was there. I'm not speaking to any legal question here in regard to what might be our response to the lawsuit that the neighbors have brought. What I'm speaking to is the fact that this is going to provide an immediate benefit in the sense of making those neighbors safer from flooding. And the long term benefit is really important. I think that this is, the design is a more sophisticated design than we've had in the past. It is encompasses several properties that weren't all that easy to get their signature on. So and I and then I'd further point out that earlier in this meeting, we talked about a property that is up gradient from this area. And I understand Mr. Cobb has put a moratorium on any development that brings more water. But this is a major step. And I believe that it will bring us benefits into the future. So I I believe we should pass this tonight. Thank you.
Other comments from members of the governing body? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Dr. Rennie and Mr. Cook are no's. The resolution or the MOU is approved.
Next item is twenty nine E, Agreement Between the City of Cheyenne, Lurie County and Cheyenne Animal Shelter for Animal Shelter Services.
All right. We have an agreement with the animal shelter for three years. Anybody in the audience want to speak to this item? Welcome, Ms. Tennant.
Hello, council members.
You bring that microphone up just a little bit. I appreciate you. Thank you.
Taller than your average constituent.
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah. I'm Brittany Tennant, the CEO of the Cheyenne Animal Shelter. And I wanted to spend a little bit of time tonight before this vote, kind of explaining to our community and to the people in this room, some of what the animal shelter does, because I think that that got lost in this year's conversation. So if you'll grant me just a little bit of time, Mr. Mayor, I want to, I want to touch on the fact that in addition to providing sheltering services for stray and surrendered pets, the animal shelter provides a lot of additional value to this community. We are engaged in pet retention, medical and behavior consultations. We provide humane education and youth programming. We have a pet food and supply pantry that we use for underserved community members. We provide low cost and sometimes free spay, neuter, vaccine and microchips, which are otherwise inaccessible to members of our community. We provide emergency veterinarian care for animals whose owners cannot afford it. We provide end of life services, including private euthanasia and cremation. We have robust volunteer and community service opportunities, and we provide recreational opportunities, which include dog training classes, group walks, runs, hikes, yoga, educational lectures and more. We have temporary pet housing for victims of homelessness, domestic violence for veterans in our community, or people who are hospitalized and cannot care for their pets. And we also engage in advocacy at the state and local level, which makes our communities more humane and compassionate for animals and people. The animal shelter's total annual budget coming into this fiscal year is two point eight million dollars. More than seventy percent of the funds that go to these and all of our other services are provided by private donors. I bring this to your attention because I want you to be proud of this partnership. I want you to look at the fact that over the last twenty months, this animal shelter has nearly eliminated its turnover, has invested more than three hundred thousand dollars in private funds in deferred maintenance and workforce development, that our save rates are consistently in excess of ninety percent and most times in excess of ninety five, that our length of stay for pets has decreased from an average of thirty days to less than seven. The shelter has developed industry leading tools in animal flow and decision making processes. And we're currently halfway through the development of model SOPs that we believe will be shared with and adopted by other animal shelters across the country. This animal shelter is a leader in the socially conscious sheltering movement, a movement which actually originated right here in this community. I am proud of the work that this animal shelter has done, and I am proud to continue serving this community through these contracts. For our part, we are here to honor this agreement as this is not only the best option for all of the animals in our care and the only option, but it is a world class option. And I just felt like that was something that needed to be said in the presence of this council and this community as we go into the discussion for this contract tonight. Thank you.
Does anybody else in the audience want to speak to this contract? Hearing none. Mr. White?
Mr. Mayor, the recommendation of the Finance Committee is to approve in an amount not to exceed eight hundred thousand for fiscal year two thousand and twenty four, eight hundred fifty thousand for fiscal year two thousand and twenty five, and nine hundred thousand for fiscal year two thousand and twenty six for a total amount of two million five hundred fifty thousand and I so move.
Seconded, seconded by Mr. Johnson.
Mr. Mayor, I move to amend by substitute dated June twelfth, twenty twenty three.
Seconded by Mr. Johnson. Anybody in the audience want to speak to the substitute before us? How about from the governing body? Hearing none. All those in favor?
We probably should just give kind of a brief, you know, every time we do a substitute, we should probably kind of give a quick briefing of what we're doing to substitute.
Would you please?
I didn't have it. I thought Jeff may have had it with, because he was in committee.
No, I I don't have it. I don't have a redlined copy. There was some minor changes, I believe, Stephanie, in some clarification of language.
Mr. Mayor through you, yes, I do. And I worked with Amber Ash with regard to these changes. They were proposed by the animal shelter staff. Under paragraph seven B, there was an, a red line. There used to be a requirement that the animal shelter, under the draft dated June sixth, two thousand and twenty one, that the animal shelter be certified by the National Animal Care and Control Association. That provision was struck in the June twelfth provision. Under seven E, the animal shelter requested that at the very end of that paragraph, the words and veterinarian services exceeding two hundred and fifty dollars be added. And under paragraph seven N, they just wanted a notation that they're closed on Wednesdays, the second Wednesday of each month and holidays, so they won't be open during that time. And those are the changes.
There's, there's one other change. The previous agreement required that we have a city member be on the board. Mr. Johnson has shared with us the financial and time commitment that is. I'm not sure there's always going to be a council member wanting to do that. So we changed that from Shallow to May. If there is a council member that wants to be part of their board, a voting member, they have to, they have to meet all the requirements of that philanthropic part, the time card. It's, it's a pretty extensive obligation, so that part changed also. Any other questions? How about from the audience? Mr. Labor?
I have a question for Ms. Tennant.
Please, ask your question.
So Ms. Tennant, appreciating all that you do and all that you have brought forward, particularly finally getting a crematorium that works. I think that's a step that I applaud. But I'm curious, do you still have a program where you neuter and vaccinate feral cats and release them back into the community?
Ms. Tennant?
Mr. Mayor through you to Councilman Labor. Sort of. The best answer there is sort of. The shelter does not go into the community and engage in trapping, but community members who trap feral cats and wish to have them spayed and neutered can bring them to the shelter to have that service done and then return them to their location on their own.
And is there any concern on the part of the board and how those animals survive and what they feed on, particularly in regard to birds? I mean, if they're, if they're released with their health improved, but without a source of air or food. I I know our avian population is under a lot of stress right now. I I applaud your efforts, but I certainly don't agree with that as a concept. It really is not, I don't believe that's particularly fair to a cat and certainly has considerations that affect other animals. So.
Ms. Tennant, do you have a comment?
Sure, Mr. Labor. The root of your question is, is does the shelter have a concern about the feeding source for these cats? And the reality is, is it's not a question that we ask the people who bring these cats to us. So if we just provide the service, who's taking care of those cats in the community or what decisions the trappers are making based on what they know about those cats is not something that is within the scope of our programming.
Well, I hope you don't mind me suggesting that it should be. Thank you.
All right, is there any other questions for members of the governing body? Substitute, yes, sir. All right, hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Supposed. Okay, the substitute is adopted and we're back on the main motion. Comments from members of the governing body? Mr. Seagrave?
I really appreciate hearing about all the activities at the animal shelter. I think it's fabulous, wonderful. Part I've always struggled with is what does the public through us owe for animal control? And that's been the hardest part for me is trying to determine what animal control is and what that should entail and what that should cost and not pay for all of these things. And I know you have great volunteers and you have fundraisers. A lot of this is paid by private. It's that dividing line. We need to be fiscally responsible with public funds. And quite frankly, I don't think the city should should pay for these things, although it's great to have. So that's where my struggle has been the last few months. And apparently we have come to the conclusion that at this time, it's eight hundred thousand a year. Next year, it's eight hundred fifty thousand, and next year, nine hundred thousand. That's what we have deemed on behalf of the public to be animal control for the City of Cheyenne. With that in mind, I'm going to support this. But I certainly don't think we owe for these other wonderful programs that are being, thank you.
Mr. Cook? I'm going to second that. That's exactly a hundred percent how I feel. There are certain things here that I don't believe as a taxpayer we should be paying for. But you will. You've, you've worked hard, both sides have worked hard to come to this agreement. So I'll support that. But I I do still, at my heart, feel it's been very one sided in sharing, sharing information. But I'll, I'll support it tonight. Anybody else in the governing body want to speak on the main motion? All right, hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. As opposed? The agreement is approved as amended, and we look forward to working with you.
Next item is twenty nine H, Professional Services Agreement between the City of Cheyenne and D H M Design Corporation for the Reed Avenue Rail Corridor Design Project.
Mr. White?
Mr. Mayor, sorry, Chris. I move to suspend the rules to allow for consideration of item twenty nine I prior to item twenty nine H. Twenty nine I will, if approved, allow for a preliminary engineering services agreement between the city and BNSF to determine services and safe operation of a railroad spur through the Reed Avenue Rail Corridor. Twenty nine H will, if approved, incorporate those services and safe operation into the design of the Reed Avenue Rail Corridor to promote economic growth and vitality and increase the aesthetics in the downtown West Edge District.
We have a motion to suspend the rules as our second. And seconded by Mr. Royble. The motion to suspend the rules to change the order of the day are not non debatable. So at this time, I'll take a vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Those opposed?
Aye.
All right, the motion passes and we're going to change the order of the day to take twenty nine I, I believe it is first. Madam Clerk, would you read that into the record?
Sure will. Preliminary Engineering Services Agreement between the City of Cheyenne and BNSF Railway Company for BNSF Contract Number BF two zero two four six six nine eight for Project Review and Diagnostic Evaluation Quiet Zone Project.
All right, is there anybody in the audience who want to speak to this preliminary engineering services agreement?
Mayor, I would.
Mr. Cobb?
Yes, Tom Cobb, City Engineer. Just to give kind of a brief overview of this, I'd like to kind of introduce what this really is. And and I have some members of our Quandell team to help me with that as well. This is really a jurisdictional process for BNSF. So just like our process of reviewing plans. um, this, in this particular instance, we are proposing a project that's adjacent to or in their right-of-way. So it's simply their approval process to walk us through the, that their process. It's just like ours, we have submittals as well. And in their case, we have like a thirty percent, sixty percent, ninety percent, a hundred percent level, and we're just working through that process. We get their comments. We, we work back and forth until we get to an agreement of what we actually want to do. Um, with that being said, um, at this particular time, we also had a concurrence letter on October 14th of 2022 that we received from BNSF, and I have a copy here for you, all of you, if you'd like to see it.
Please. Yeah, one for the clerk also.
Pass him down.
Who loves you, Chris.
And while this letter doesn't say that they, we've completely agreed on terms, what they've been submitted is basically a concept design. It says they've agreed that we're going to work through this until we get to a, a design that we both want to achieve. Um, I mean, it was, as we came through, this letter was for um concurrence with the Federal Rail Authority on some, some crossings that we were looking at eliminating. Um, you know, they state that the, it, they'll, will produce an acceptable design, and they will continue to participate in that effort. So I just, I wanted the council to hear that, you know, BNSF is committed to our project. We don't have specific details yet, but this P and E agreement is necessary for us to move forward and, and work through the, those, those submittals and their, their, I guess their approval process. Um, it's stated in, in what we started for, this will be funded through the twenty seventeen one percent specific sales tax and use, and BNSF's estimated cost for the work is ninety-six thousand four hundred and ten dollars. What that cost is for is they hire a consultant to do the review of our plan sets, and they reimburse, we, we have to reimburse them for those costs. And with that, I'll take any other questions you have. And I also want to introduce at this time, um, Randy Grobberger of Quandell. He's our project manager, and DJ Mitchell, who is our, um, we'll call him for lack of a better term, our class one specialist. Um, Mr. Mitchell and Mr. Grobberger are available as well. I'd like for them to at least state a few things before you ask their questions.
Okay. Jennifer, are you gonna unmute?
We're both unmuted.
Okay, gentlemen, if you want to introduce yourselves, please.
Yes, um, good afternoon, everybody. Uh, glad to be with you today. Uh, my name is Randy Grobberger. I'm a senior rail consultant with Quandell Consultants uh out of Denver, Colorado. Uh, previous to my last two and a half years with Quandell, I was the uh project director for Colorado's Front Range uh Passenger Rail Commission. Um, I worked closely with Dale Steenbergen of, of Cheyenne. He was the Wyoming non-voting member on that board, uh, and also worked very closely with DJ Mitchell. DJ at the time was employed by BNSF Railway, and DJ was appointed as BNSF's voting member of the Rail Commission. Um, previous to my uh experience with the Rail Commission, I've been a consultant uh for the last fourteen years after retiring from the Colorado Department of Transportation, having headed up uh CDOT's rail programs uh throughout the course of my career at CDOT. So at this point, uh, I'd like to introduce DJ Mitchell and let DJ answer any questions that you may have regarding this P E agreement with BNSF Railway.
Hi, DJ. Good evening, Councilor Mayor. This is DJ Mitchell. Uh, I am a retired BNSF employee, retired after forty years of service at the BNSF and the Burleson Northern before that. Uh, in the various positions I held, I oversaw the operation of commuter rail service in Chicago from Chicago to Aurora, Illinois. And in doing so, I participated in many projects like the one you're going to be discussing. So with that, I'll leave it at that and, and try to answer any questions you may have.
Does anybody in the governing body have a question for our consultants? Gentlemen, I think we don't have any questions for you at this time, so please stand by. Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. Cobb, do you have any?
No, Mayor, I do not.
All right, so let's go out to the audience to see if there's anybody in the audience want to speak to this bringing services agreement. You know, in the audience, hearing none, Mr. White, may we have a motion, please?
Mr. Mayor, the recommendation of the Finance Committee is to approve in an amount of ninety-six thousand four hundred ten dollars, and I so move.
Seconded by Mr. Labor. Comments from members of the governing body?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Seagrave.
I guess I'm I don't know if I'm more disappointed in myself for the process, but I've been told over and over and over again that we were trying to get an easement for this property so that we could move forward with our project. I, I don't, I still don't see this anywhere in the foreseeable future. Well, I, I believe what I'm being asked to vote on tonight is, first of all, in reverse order, approve this engineering agreement, but in order for this to be valid and useful, I'm going to be asked to approve one point three million to develop the project with no assurances whatsoever that any of this will materialize. So between the two of these, I'm looking at roughly one point four million dollars just to submit to the railroad to let them review it and possibly approve it. Is, is, am I on the, am I on the right rails here?
Maybe the best person to ask that question would be DJ. Um, Mr. Mitchell, uh, Mr. Labor, did, were you able to hear his question?
I am now unmuted. Yes, I was.
You answer that, please. I think his concern is, is that uh we're going to spend one point four million dollars with no assurances that we'll be able to do this project.
I, I think I'd answer it in two ways. First of all, the, the letter from BNSF basically said conceptually, they don't disagree with the project. Uh, however, many details have to be ironed out. What the city is being asked to pay for is to make sure that there's certainty with respect to scope, schedule, and budget. You don't want to go into a project saying, well, it's going to cost ten dollars, when in fact, at the end of the process, everybody says there's an overrun, and it costs a hundred dollars. What you're trying to do is gain certainty over those three elements, scope, schedule, and budget, to make sure that no fatal flaws are identified as you move into a, a decision to actually invest sizable amounts of money in the, in the construction of the improvements that have been, been uh conceptually called for. Does that help?
Mr. Seagrave.
That helps. Um, so I guess I'm back to I wanted an easement. I wanted assurances that if we spent millions of taxpayers' dollars either in the development, either engineering, the, the issues that he just brought up, that we would, if we could find the money, which is the next issue, would be able to build the project. And I'm, I don't feel that at all. Uh, maybe, maybe a question for the trigger. We've already spent several hundred thousand dollars on a design
We have.
that we threw out the, the window. So out of the four million dollars that the people have given us, this is approximately four million, roughly four hundred thousand that was useless. We're about halfway through the four million dollars, and there's no assurances that we're going to do this project. I'm sorry, as a business person, I would never spend money like this, and I can't spend public money as much as I want this project, and I do authorize this type of money without some assurances this project is going to move forward. Thank you.
Mr. Mitchell, is, is there another way that the railroad would be willing to, or is there, do they do that where we can have assurances uh before we go into this that they're willing to work with us on this project, or how do we answer Mr. Seagrave's concern?
I think you've, I, I believe you received from the BNSF assurance that, that they're committed to work with you on the project. Uh, the issue gets down to be one of understanding the scope of, of the project, whether or not it will meet your needs first and protect the railroad's operations second, so that both can live as neighbors going forward after the project's completed. Uh, one could very well ask for further clarification, but you're probably not going to get from the BNSF an assurance that this is a done deal, substitute simply some engineering reviews, because the engineering reviews are substantive and may uncover things that, that actually the city decides the project just, just cannot go forward. Now, I'm not going to suggest that, but the purpose of this process is to make sure that nothing like that happens. So the councilman is, is correct in being concerned that, that there are some unknowns here, but the unknowns will be addressed through the process that has been described.
Dr. Rennie, did you have a comment?
No, I, well, yes, I do, Mr. Mayor. It seems like at least the sticking point this entire time has been the nineteen oh nine, nineteen oh eight agreement with BNSF that none of us were aware of when those of us that were here in two thousand sixteen, seventeen, to put this on the six penny. And it seems like, I mean, that kind of in for a penny, in for a pound. I mean, if we're going to get BNSF to go along with us and work with us, it sounds as though we have to have this contract.
Any other comments, Mr. Labor?
Well, I certainly share the frustration that it's being expressed tonight in, in a real major way. This is embarrassing. That we are six years from voter approval. Nevertheless, voters approved it to specific, and we have an obligation to fulfill this. I wish we could go back to the prior administration and determine the choices that were made. Um, we can't. And the frustration that I feel, as well as other people here, no doubt, uh, probably is pretty minor compared to the frustration that the people who invested up and down that rail corridor feel that we haven't been able to produce. So having been through the questions of the original uh legal matter, the other consultants we used, they failed. What's our choice here? And I want to point out that I, I'm also very concerned about these costs. I think we're going to hear more in the next item about how we are going to be looking at grant proposals, opportunities that are, that exist in terms of federal funds. So it is a, an unfortunate fact that we put something on the ballot and that frankly, in my opinion, the prior administration didn't like, didn't support. We had consultants that couldn't deliver, but um this project is one that follows on our effort to come to the west side, to do the kind of improvements we could see across the street at the Civic Commons in preparation with the, with the drainage work, with investment that the community has made in the, in the library across the street, and the entire westward move that includes the construction of this building. And I want to point out that the time is now. Uh, years ago, I don't think people would have really considered uh those boulder brick buildings to be hip and cool. Well, they consider it to be that way now, and we know that by the investments that's been made. So I speak in favor of this with the recognition that um until we begin that process, it's been spelled out here by our consultants, um, we're going to be doing more of the same, which is um not achieving what we told the voters and the investors we were going to do. So uh having been involved in this extensively in a, in a number of ways, I speak very highly for the adoption of this so that we can move on and, and see something that eventually, I certainly believe, can be a real big effort here in our community to create something unique that people will support, investors already have. So let's keep going, get this job done. Thank you.
Any other comments from members of the governing body?
Mr. Mayor.
Dr. Rennie.
Perhaps the consultants or engineer can explain, just so I understand, to me, how do these two issues mesh together? It seems like we have to have, we should have the agreement with BNSF before we start doing designs, but on the other hand, seems like without the designs, BNSF doesn't want to go any farther. So to me, it seems like a chicken or egg argument, and so how, what is, what is the timing on, on this?
DJ, I think what he's saying, or what I'm hearing him ask is, um, uh, we have to approve the, the contract with the engineering uh agreement with the BNSF, but they won't approve our, our process unless we have a design, which is what the next item on our agenda is. Is that correct?
Uh, that is correct. That is correct.
Go ahead, Dr. Rennie.
So then what, on, on this portion, on the MOU and the ninety-six thousand we're spending, what are we just, does that get set aside and, and that process is put on hold until we come up with the design at thirty-five percent, fifty percent, whatever? I, that's why I just, I don't understand the timing how this is.
DJ, can you walk us through the timeline and, and the process? Uh, once, if we replay both H and I in our, on our agenda today, um, how that goes. We're going to spend one point, almost three million dollars on the uh reset professional services agreement, and we have the preliminary engineering agreement of ninety-six thousand dollars. Can you walk through how that happens?
There are, there are two steps involved. One is with respect to the design that the city wishes to pursue to a thirty percent level. Let's just use thirty percent as the first gate, if you will. When that work is done, that has a cost, and I'm not going to get into the cost of either one of these. That is then handed over to the railroad. They will have their folks look at it to make sure that, that those designs meet all the standards that apply to a railroad operating basically in a, in a highway or roadway right-of-way. All right, then you, you take it further. Now that there's agreement with respect to the matter of thirty percent designs, okay, let's get some real design drawings done. Those are done at the sixty percent level, maybe the seventy percent level, somewhere in that neighborhood. Those design drawings are then given back to the railroad. They look at those, and they once again review them and say, yes, the detail is also correct. Then you get to a hundred percent design, the railroad will approve those designs at hundred percent, and then the city is allowed, basically through an agreement that then follows, to go off and carry out the project. Is that helpful?
Not in his head, sir. Thank you. Mr. Escobillo.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, through you. I think that's the major domino that's falling here. The fact that BNN has submitted a letter to the FRA shows somewhat of their commitment to the project, and basically two things I think they're concerned about are operations and liability. And they don't want to abandon the line. It's ten mile an hour line. So if they still have the ability to operate that line with the fencing that, the design that I've seen shows where pedestrians can't access that line through where that easement line is, uh, those are the two main considerations I think that they're looking for. So we couldn't even get them to the table two years ago, and now they're, they're submitting these letters to the, their higher-ups, which oversee projects like this, and uh we're going to be visionaries, uh, like the people who voted for it want us to be. Uh, it's, we'll steam ahead.
Any other comments from members of the governing body? All right, hearing none, we have a motion to approve a preliminary engineering services agreement, the BNSF. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. Mr. Seagrave is a no. The preliminary engineering services agreement is approved. Now on item number H.
Professional Services Agreement between the City of Cheyenne and D H M Design Corporation for the Reed Avenue Rail Corridor Design Project.
All right, we'll go out to the audience. Mr. Cobb, did you have a?
I do, Mayor. I just, again, wanted to get, kind of give a high level here, and, and I also have members of the, of our D H M team to ask her any questions as well. So we respectfully request her approval for this professional services agreement um between the City of Cheyenne and D H nine. Obviously, the project goal for this is to design a city corridor that promotes economic growth, vitality, with increased aesthetics in the Cheyenne's West Edge District. The design will provide the opportunity for The design will provide the opportunity for mixed pedestrian traffic, facilitate downtown business development, while still allowing for the safe operation of Class One railroad spurs that run through the corridor. The project limits on this particular, we've expanded since the last time we've looked at this. The stop limit is the northern extent of the Uni-Pacific Railroad, and the north limit is West Twenty-Fourth and a portion to the Burlington Northern Santa Fe Railroad, Y that runs northwesterly from Reed to Dillon. Um, our consultant selection, we provided, um, through our City of Cheyenne purchasing policy and follow that, we had a selection committee that was comprised of the city staff from engineering, planning and development, and council members as well. The estimated cost, as was been previously stated, and will come from the twenty seventeen one percent specific sales tax at one million, two hundred and eighty-one thousand, two hundred and seventy-nine dollars and twenty cents. Um, the total professional services, um, are comprised of many facets that were never included in the previous design, and I might add, just for the council's benefit, all of the CAD files and information that were supplied from the previous consultant have been sequestered, and we are not starting from zero. We're able to use topography, the main basics components of all of the information that was gathered, at least in the field. So they have, they're, they're, they do have all that to start from. Um, in this particular component and contract, we have project management and programming associated with the corridor design, development and implementation of a complete public involvement program, um, some supplemental surveying, geotechnical investigation, environmental remediation, environmental clearances for federal funding and other grant opportunities, architectural services, landscaping services, structural engineering services, which include a underpass underneath Lincoln Way, which was not included previously as well, the architectural services for architectural components all along the corridor, um, civil engineering and drainage design services, a, a branding component, um, Class One Railroad negotiations, and also for the end, a complete construction plan and development. Um, and I'd like to introduce Matthew Whipple from DHM Design, um, to, to say a few words as well.
Good evening, everyone. Matthew Whipple, uh, principal with DHM Design. I guess I'd just like to start off, uh, expressing our genuine excitement for the Reed Avenue Corridor project and the opportunity to potentially work with the City of Cheyenne again. Um, our team is comprised of various architects and engineers, uh, Class One Railroad consultants, environmental consultants, marketing, communication, historic rail corridors, um, to ensure the team is well-rounded and able to tackle the project and see it through, uh, completion. I'd also like to point out that we worked with Quandell, um, on the Reed Avenue Corridor Master Plan Phase One project. And we're going to keep the current momentum that we have with BNSF and with UP uh, and keep this moving forward with city staff, local stakeholders, and most importantly, with the railroads. Um, and we also understand that the project has a very tight timeline of twelve months to complete shovel-ready construction documents, and I think our team is very much prepared to meet that timeline. Um, one thing I would like to point out is that some conceptual design by our team through the Phase One project has been completed, and that was, that was sent to BNSF, and it was reviewed, and they, they do like the direction that we're going. Otherwise, we wouldn't have gotten those letters of cooperation. So thank you for the opportunity to speak here.
Thank you, Matthew. Is there anybody on the governing body would like to speak to the consultant or ask a question? Doctor Rennie?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Hello, Matt, how are you?
I'm good, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, in the past, we've kind of used as a rule of thumb, the, the design is about ten percent of the cost of the project. So my speculation is, and maybe Mr. Whipple can correct me if I'm wrong, that they're envisioning this to be around a twelve point eight, thirteen million dollar project. Is that accurate?
Mr. Whipple, is that an accurate statement?
Mr. Mayor, I would, I would say it is somewhat accurate. At this point, we're not sure what that, what that, you know, estimate's going to be, but I think those numbers are pretty close.
And Mr. Mayor, if that numbers are close, as my colleague from Ward Two alluded to a little bit ago, we are severely underfunded. So I guess then my question's along those lines. I presume that your plan will, I mean, we may have a couple million left over, but my, I assume you're, after these expenses, but I assume your plan would then allow for phasing of some sort until we come up with future funding, and I also, I don't remember as Engineer Cobb was reading it off, but obviously, I'm hoping there's other funding opportunities out there that you'll be able to look for.
Mr. Whipple?
Mr. Mayor, through you, uh, Councilman Rennie, um, yes, we, we are going to look at additional grant funding through a few of our consultants here. We're going to take multiple directions and try to find additional grant funding for the project. And I'm sorry, I can't, I can't remember the first part of your question.
Was, will there, will there be a schedule that can be phased in? We, we will have two million maybe to, maybe to spend initially. And we at least need to show the public we're doing something and making some improvement because obviously, we're going to have to go back and ask for, for more money. So that needs to be considered in the, in the proposal as well.
Mr. Whipple, are you, do you have a phase, uh, process, uh, in, in mind?
Mr. Mayor, through you, uh, we absolutely are going to have to phase this. Um, our design fees are for full construction documentation of the project from, of all phases. And then as we get close to the end of the project through our design phase, and depending on what budget you have and what kind of grant funding we can go after, uh, then we'll look at phasing and Phase One will, will just be for what you guys have or what the city has for, for a budget.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Questions for their consultant? All right, how about from the audience? Anybody else in the audience want to speak to this item? Hearing none, Mr. White.
Mr. Mayor, the recommendation of the finance committee is to approve in an amount not to exceed one million, two hundred and eighty-one thousand, two hundred and seventy-nine dollars and twenty cents. An ISO move.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Royball. Comments from members of the governing body? Mr. Seagrave.
Mr. Mayor, once again, I like the project. I love the project. Don't like the process. I feel like I've been misled. Told for two years now that we're looking for easements. That's not true at all. I hear just now that there have been conceptual designs that have been submitted to the railroad. I feel like a mushroom, kind of hidden in the dark over here. How can I, how can I be expected to based upon these events? I just, uh, I'm very disappointed in the entire process, and so I'm, I'm an O again. Thank you.
Other comments from members of the governing body, Mr. Labor?
Thank you, Mr. President, I missed, Mr. Mayor. I would point out that until I called this off the consent agenda, it was going to be approved without this discussion. Wasn't? Well, in any case, I think it's best to have this type of discussion so that people can understand our concerns and our interests. And I think that, uh, as difficult as it might be, we really need to decide tonight follow-through that I believe is indicated by the support of the public in the vote as well as the investment of the people who have invested along that corridor and their expectation. Thank you.
Doctor Rennie, did you have a comment, sir? All right, any other comments from members of the governing body? Hearing none, we have a professional services agreement before us. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Doctor, or Mr. Seagrave and Mr. Cooker knows the, uh, professional services agreement is approved.
Next item is twenty-nine J, Memorandum of Understanding Between the City of Cheyenne, Cheyenne Police Department, Laramie County School District Number One, for the School Resource Officers Program, SRO, Revenue to the City.
All right, is there anyone in the audience want to speak to this memorandum of understanding with the school district? Hearing none, Mr. White.
Mr. Mayor, the recommendation of the finance committee is to approve an amount of six hundred nineteen thousand, five hundred fifty-two dollars plus overtime, an ISO move.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Royball. Comments for members of the governing body? Comments? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The memorandum of understanding is approved.
Next item is thirty-eight, Contract Mo- Modification Number One to Contract Number Seventy-Five Thirty-Eight between the City of Cheyenne and TFM dash twenty-two LLC Doing Business as Top Flight Maintenance Incorporated for Janitorial Services for the Municipal Building.
Right, is there anybody in the audience want to speak to the contract modification for, um, janitorial services for our municipal building? Anybody in the audience? Hearing none, Mr. White.
Mr. Mayor, the recommendation of the finance committee is to approve in an amount not to exceed eighty-four thousand, three hundred sixty-six dollars, an ISO move.
Seconded by Mr. Royball. Mr. Labor.
Well, those of us that work here might have varying opinions about quality of this, uh, janitorial service. Obviously, uh, years ago, when we had our own janitorial service, it was better. But I would recommend that every member up here tonight go by the restroom here on the first floor and look at his floor and determine if you think you're getting your value. I don't think we are. Thank you.
Other comments from members of the governing body? All right, hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Those of both. Mr. Labor is a no. The contract modification is approved.
Next item is thirty-one D. Consideration of Bid Number S dash twenty-two dash twenty-three for an agreement between the City of Cheyenne and Ameritech HVAC Services Incorporated for the HVAC and Mechanical Systems Maintenance Project. Twenty nineteen to twenty twenty-two optional one percent sales tax fund, two thousand twelve specific purpose option tax fund, civic center fund, fleet ma- maintenance fund, general fund, solid waste fund, and the ISNevet Center Fund.
All right, um, at this time, we'll go out to the audiences. Is there anybody in the audience want to speak to this bid for HVAC services? Hearing none, Mr. White.
Mr. Mayor, the recommendation of the finance committee is to accept the bid in an amount not to exceed one million, five hundred thirty-two thousand, eight hundred sixty-two dollars, an ISO move.
There's a second. Seconded by Mr. Seagrave. Comments from members of the governing body, Mr. Labor?
Mr. Mayor, um, I have some questions about, uh, how this particular contract came before us.
If you'll ask the question, I'll get you an answer, sir.
Uh, can I be told how long and through how many contracts, uh, H, the, uh, Ameritech HVAC has held this contract?
Vicky, do you know that number, or was it be better to ask TJ? TJ, are you online, sir?
Good evening, Mayor Collins. This is TJ. Can you hear me all right?
Yes, sir. Can you answer Mr. Labor's questions about how many times or, or how long Ameritech has had this contract?
Certainly, uh, Mayor, I can at least confirm, I started with the city in October of twenty eighteen, and we were under contract with them at that time, and we have been, um, the whole time that I've worked as purchasing manager. So that's, this would be the third contract term since I've been an employee of the city, and I do think that they've been employed by the city for quite a lot before that time. So that's at least all I can confirm off the top of my head. So I would say at least five, for sure, five years, probably closer to ten to fifteen, if I had to just take a, a guess out of the air.
Thank you, TJ.
Um, well, I appreciate, uh, Mr. Bartle Board's answer as far as he is aware, but that doesn't answer my question of when this contract was first approved. And then I believe since then, it's been approved and amended several times.
Vicky, do you know the answer, ma'am?
Vicky Nimicek, Public, Public Works through you, Mayor. I don't know that, uh, number, but we have rebid this every two years, every four years, every four years, we have rebid this. If TJ can confirm that, uh, that we have rebid, it's not amending the contract over and over.
Mr. Seagrave, I remember correctly, when we first got in council twenty years ago, uh, they had the contract. I think it's been at least twenty years.
I would agree with that, yeah.
Mayor, this is TJ. Can I, I add on to what Vicky said?
Sure.
Um, so Vicky's absolutely correct. We do the bid for a two-year term. So, uh, we, it's a, for pricing for year one, pricing for year two, then that contract ceases and a rebid is done as we're winding down that second year. So i- it's essentially a brand-new bid opportunity every two years. So new bidders are welcome to come view facilities, tour the facilities, ask questions. That opportunity comes up as a new bid opportunity every two years. And that's, and I can guarantee that that has happened since I've been employed.
Mr. Labor.
Well, looking back on it, I have a further question. When this contract was first approved, uh, was the owner, um, member of the council?
I can answer that question. I don't believe he was. We were on the council before he was elected. Hi, Doctor Rennie.
But there was a time in there, Mr. Mayor, where the, one of the partners in the company was a council member.
That is correct.
Although during those times, he always recused himself. We, it was always sent out for bid. Ameritech, in all those cases, was the lowest bidder. Or sometimes the only bidder.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think we have to look at the fact that, uh, over perhaps as much as twenty years with, uh, political influence in a very unique way, uh, this contract has been awarded over and over again to the same company. And I think we have to also take into consideration, as, uh, Mr. Bartle Board mentioned, the effort that's involved in preparing a bid of this nature by another competitor. Um, that's a lot of work, a lot of time, and it's my opinion that, uh, there's a reluctance to submit that because they believe that they're not going to be, um, able to come before this body and explain exactly what we're talking about here. So I would point out that we've had an unusual, amazing number of problems in this building uh, with our HVAC systems as maintained by Ameritech. I'm not a electrical or heating specialist, but I think we all know that there have been really serious problems. I'm not aware of any, uh, third-party analysis of those problems. And here we are, committing a very substantial amount of money again to the same company. And I think that that is, uh, maybe not, maybe they're not really coming out and saying that they don't believe that this is a equitable process, but their silence says that. Why aren't we getting any other proposals? So I speak against this. It's a very substantial amount of money, again, and I'm not sure that we're really getting, uh, that kind of analysis from this, uh, corporation that we might get from, uh, some others in terms of the updating of technology and the ability to, uh, seek energy efficiency. I think we're doing the same thing over and over again. I think that's wrong. Thank you.
Mr. Nimicek, could you?
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, Doctor Rennie.
Well, Director Nimicek's getting up. I just want to say, I guess in defense of our processes, in defense of the people that have worked on this over the years, there's nothing unique about how this contract has been, been approved. I mean, again, it was always either, they were always the lowest bidder. We followed all of our bid procedures as specified by the state. They were always the lowest bid bidder or the only bidder. Um, again, I somewhat understand the frustration. I don't know why companies like Train don't bid on it, and perhaps it bent, we would benefit by maybe calling them and asking that if we've never, if we haven't done that in the past. Um, but we have to have HVAC services in this building, so voting no seems to me like we're cutting off our nose despite our face.
Mr. Nimicek, I think this one point five million dollars, part of that is the, uh, the maintenance, but is there also? Mr. Nimicak, I think this one point five million dollars, part of that is the uh the maintenance, but is there also not a second component to that?
Vicky Nimicak public works, yes, uh mayor, there's actually a one point two million dollar uh new equipment, we did ask for in the budget uh several, six facilities to receive new equipment, that new equipment was included in this bid and actually did bring out some other uh bidders, some other contractors, we did have four people uh respond, four vendors respond uh and came to the mandatory pre-bid, um however, only two showed up to the uh walk-through and halfway through, I don't even know if they got halfway through, but the uh one of the contractors said, we simply don't have the people to do this, uh what you're, what you expect. So um we ended up um with one bidder and again, that was Ameritech. Um we met the city attorney, the facilities manager, the purchasing manager, myself all met in April trying to, could, and frankly, it's because we knew this would come up again. It comes up most, most times that this uh contract comes up for renewal or uh rebid and we end up with the um with the same vendor or contractor. So we met and we talked about some ways that we could get some additional vendors, uh we um were successful, at least in bringing some in, but uh unsuccessful in actually getting another bid. So if anybody has any ideas, we're open to suggestions.
Thank you, Ms. Nimicak.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, ma'am.
Uh Mr. Bartle Board has his hand raised again.
TJ.
Uh mayor, if I could just take one moment to add on to what Vicky said, I would appreciate the opportunity, um. We did uh have a good turnout for the pre-bid meeting, uh we had lots of new firms that we haven't seen before that came to attend and we, that, I've never seen a room that full for our pre-bid walk, um. We took careful note on this bid to ensure that from the time the bid was released and in time the, until we closed the question submission deadline, we had the most amount of days in there possible to make this bid schedule work so that bidders that truly were interested in submitting a bid would have ample time and opportunity to tour the facilities to give everyone a fair shot at submitting a bid, so given our bid circumstances, I feel that we conducted the bid in the most fair and transparent manner possible. And as Vicky noted, we still only did get one bid, we don't have the power to compel bidders and we, I feel that we did our efforts to conduct this to our best ability, so just wanted to make that note and available for any other questions you have, thank you.
Anybody else in the governing body want to speak to this um consideration of bid? Alright, hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Mr. Laboran is a no, consideration for bid is approved.
Next item is thirty two A, retail liquor license application filed with the city clerk's office for Cheyenne Regional Airport Board doing businesses Cloud Nine Restaurant and Bar, three hundred East Eighth Avenue, Cheyenne, Wyoming.
Alright, is there anybody in the audience want to speak to this um retail liquor license application before us? Please come forward. Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, uh Mike Moser, Wyoming State Liquor Association, um I'm not here on behalf of my retailers, uh I'm on the, I'm here on behalf in the request of a higher power, which would be legislators to kind of clarify uh what the legislative intent for the empowering legislation was. Before I get into it and I'll be as brief as possible, because I can't believe how late you guys go, but uh uh there is no greater supporter of the Cheyenne Airport than me, I love the airport, I love the air traffic to Denver. It's a religious experience being able to get around wandering through DIA in the parking lot and no one would love to see the Cloud Nine opening in, again, more than me, maybe not enough to do it myself, but it would be great to see somebody do it. The two bills that authorized this legisla, the, the, this license, first one was House Bill fifty five, which was in two thousand twenty-two. The reason for it wasn't the Cheyenne Airport, it was actually an airport in the middle of the state. And I was approached by several legislators that said we would like, that the problem is, they were in the county, but there, there were three within five, y'all know what that is. And so they had a full retail, but they really wanted to use it for something else, so it's like, well, let's give them a bar and grill, so the initial drafts of House Bill fifty-five that no one saw actually gave them a bar and grill liquor license. Well, one of the people who was helping us with the bill was a state senator out at the northwestern part of the state who has a full retail in the airport up there. And he said that he does a, that did a substantial business of gift sets. That sort of thing, which didn't exist back in the Cloud Nine days, but you want to get a little chronicles, you want to get a little pinebobs, stilling, take it home as a souvenir. Which is why we made it a full retail, not for packaged liquor sales per se, but for the ability to sell gift sets, because it does help the business. Um we've supported lots of bills like that, especially, or like this, especially when the business or the entity is doing something that a normal business can't do, it's not as easy to make it at an airport as it used to be. And so that bill passed, everybody was happy, well. It wasn't just here, it was a package liquor store uh that was being proposed uh with the airport liquor license, which legislators felt wasn't the intent, there was also an airport that was going to use an FBO as a target for their liquor license. And so legislators came to me and said, can you write something that puts sideboards on this to make sure its intent was as originally intended to promote commercial air traffic, to make a business in the terminal more viable through gifts, gift sales and that sort of thing. And so we wrote something up, uh we put in sideboards, now, uh to me, it's pretty obvious, the, the, in the bill, it refers to a license being in the terminal building, not a terminal building, but the terminal building. And so with that bill was not controversial, it actually passed the house on third reading fifty-nine, two to one. Uh and so the legislature clearly, clearly felt that this should be something that is of use to the public and promote commercial air traffic in Wyoming. Uh now, I love that the Cloud Nine, after selling it twenty-three years ago, is still a topic, because it was a wonderful place. And I would like to see something like that again, especially if we go back to the big windows, I think it's a wonderful option. Uh and I would help the Cheyenne Airport any way I possibly can, I spent a lot of happy years owning the Cloud Nine and I'd like to see it back. But it could actually do, and we could have done back then probably with a bar and grill. Uh because we did very little packaged liquor, the only thing is the bar stayed open later, but that doesn't really happen much anymore, because people don't go out late at the way they used to. So you probably could do with a bar and grill, maybe you could consider air traffic entertainment. Just thinking, you know, I don't know if that's in your ordinance, uh but the, the airport does, I love that building, we used to, I don't know about you all, we used to call it the Jetson Memorial Airport. It's very sixties, it's apparently modeled after someplace in LaGuardia and it's a beautiful building, I would love to see something done with it. On the other hand, I would like to see, and we don't have a position on this, but clarification. The idea of the airport liquor license was to help generate air traffic and give the public an amenity that would make the terminal more attractive. And so that's why I'm here, thanks for humoring me, uh and if you have any questions, I would be glad to answer it, Mr. Mayor, members of the council.
Thank you, Mr. Moser, anybody have a question for? Mr. Moser, Dr. Rainey.
Mr. Moser, if we were to approve this license with the intent to help resurrect that building. Um do you have any speculation on what the reaction from some of the legislators you know would be?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, through you.
Please.
I'm learning how to do it like you guys, Councilman Rainey, uh actually, one legislator said, please don't make them, make us put sideboards on the side. Uh because it was meant for commercial air traffic, now, I did have a full retail liquor license with the Cloud Nine and I competed with other businesses, uh but that's because it was my full retail liquor license. This license is designed specifically for a purpose and that purpose is for commercial air traffic.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, anybody else?
Mr. Rusk, through you, Mr. Moser, is it too early for us to have any data yet that whether those other two places? Those licenses have increased air traffic?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, through you, uh Councilman Escobal, you mean the two places?
Well, didn't you say that their intent was to increase air traffic?
Uh, yes, and once again through you, uh I don't think there's any way to measure whether it increased air traffic, but it certainly makes the terminal more attractive when you can get a bite to eat and something to drink while you wait. And as the Cloud Nine and, and I was hoping Billy Jack would also become a destination for airport traffic for people just coming by. You just want to generate more traffic in the terminal proper. But for those of us who arrive at airports a little early, it's kind of nice to get there a little early and just have a drink or something to eat. And so I don't think there's any way except anecdotally of saying it increased air traffic when we did this, but we do know that amenities in an airport uh for the flying public is important.
Follow up, Mr. Escobal? Maybe later, thank you. Mr. Royball.
Mr. Moser, just a quick it with your experiences with legislators, like you said, the sideboards, with this meeting the spirit of the law, do you think it meets the intent? Because they, they've shown us that the uh terminal they're using is active or different items. Uh I think we got a letter from Tom Montoya that said it would meet. Is that true?
Mr. Mayor, through you, Chris Jones, City Clerk, Councilman Rainey, um we did receive a letter in I guess I should go kind of back to the beginning, when we sent the application to the liquor division to be certified to begin with, they indicated um in a correction memo that it didn't meet the definition, no commercial air traffic at that terminal. They sense were advised that there are some, some charters that are going out of there, so they have deemed the application complete. But they did have some recommendations in the memo that I sent everybody.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, through you, Councilman Rayball, uh the liquor division's pretty cautious about stuff like that, like a good state agency, as we as we joke, uh if we want their opinion, we'll beat it out of them. And so unless it's a clear violation of the law, they're probably not going to as far as regarding the intent, since the language in the, in statute now says the main terminal. Uh to me, that's a singular, and so the intent was
Does it say main terminal or the terminal?
It says happen to have it. Uh sales of alcoholic liquor or mobile beverages can only be made in the terminal building and connected concourses.
Correct.
So i- if it said A, terminal, but in this case it's the.
And so.
Thank you.
Mr. Royball, are you finished? Mr. Johnson.
So taking this in the way that it was presented to me by the airport manager because they're actually on the same airfield. And with basically charters, diversions, cargo, they were go, that they were intending to go out of what I guess you could say, what the Jerry Olson, even though I, I refer to the Cheyenne Regional Airport as the new terminal and then the uh Jerry Olson is the old terminal. But basically, under that type of law, when they were talking just with the, what um Mr. Bradshaw wrote back to me in regards to taking a bus between, you know, if there was a diversion and they were actually to be held in the Olson terminal and then were bussed over to do uh TSA screening in the new terminal, I'd be pleased, since it's on the air, same airfield, because all of us have been to many, many airports where concourses are not actually combined, you know, like even DIA has, you know, the main terminal and it has three separate concourses. But none of those are connected except for, you know, the train that goes between them. So therefore, under that same logic, basically couldn't the old terminal, if it was to operate commercial aircraft, because under part one thirty-five with charters and cargo and things like that, it could be an operational terminal, that it could be looked at as an adjacent concourse to the, to that airfield, is that kind of, I mean, it's a broad stroke, but legally what you just read looks like this could still be feasible, because it's all on the same airfield, if you're operating those two different concourses, because you're calling it the main terminal, but not a concourse, and if they had basically um changed the semantics of it to say that this is now concourse A in the Olson terminal, therefore it would follow under your purview of law, correct?
Moser.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, uh through you, Councilman Johnson, uh that's why we don't have a position, I'm here to clarify, you are the city council, it's your decision, I do know that there was an FBO that wanted to disliker license before House Bill one forty-eight passed elsewhere on the airport and they determined it was not appropriate once the bill passed, so they gave up. But on the other hand, you are the council, I mean, I'm just a simple country lobbyist, and so I was asked to clarify what I felt the legislative intent was since I co-authored these two bills. So if you feel like that's the case, uh Councilman Johnson, vote for it, because I think the world of Mr. Bradshaw, like I said, I love the Cheyenne Airport, uh but the legislators I, that reached out to me, wanted me to communicate what content was in the committee meeting, some of you have seen the uh testimony on this legislation, in fact, Mr. Mayor, you were there, Senate Corporations, and so uh the bill sponsor was quite clear that that was not his intent, his intent was the terminal. But we're the council, you're the bosses, so do what you will.
Mr. Moser, would it be fair to say that his intent was not to have a packaged liquor store off premises, that it was to be in the terminal?
Um, Mr. Mayor, through yourself. I'm not used to this protocol, this isn't how legislature works, um well, like I said, it was Cheyenne got all the attention, but there was actually another airport, a larger airport in Wyoming that was thinking about, because their bar and restaurant has a full retailer A and has no intentions of giving it up, so they were going to put that full retail from the airport in one of their larger FBOs and that was part of the response as well.
Dr. Rainey, did you have a comment? Alright. Anything else from the audience? If you want, Mr. Bradshaw, you don't have to. Okay. Any other comments from members of the audience? Hearing none, Mr. White.
Mr. Mayor, the motion to approve failed at the finance committee meeting, therefore, there is no recommendation.
Is there a motion?
I would move to
Okay.
Second.
Mr. Royball. Been moved and seconded by Mr. Royball, comments for members of the governing body. Mr. Laboran.
Mr. Mayor, um I'm referring to the Cheyenne Regional Arts and Aviation Center study that we got. And uh talks about the very worthwhile effort here and the fifty thousand dollar grant to begin the design and understanding of the of the project. But I'm looking at the eight million to sixteen million to restore the iconic landmark. And I'm wondering, when you're looking at variety of funding sources and it's my understanding that if we issue this license it will immediately become parked, is that correct, since there is not a facility for it to be used in?
Madam Clerk.
Mr. Mayor, through you, Councilman Laboran, that is correct, um until that facility has passed all of the inspections and everything necessary, we would not, it would not be active at that time and it would go into a parked status.
Thank you, and my point would be, how realistic is it to think that in two years this amount of money is going to be available and have that purpose that is uh in this schematic that also has uh the restaurant and bar, which could be, which could use a restaurant and, and grill license. Um I just wonder what we're going to be doing two years down the road and if this is realistic. Um that is uh something I think the community is very interested in, I certainly am. But having reviewed the documents thus far in terms of what rehabilitation would necessitate, I I was speaking in opposition for this, because certainly what's conceived of here could be handled under another license. And I think the tortured reasoning that we're having here, that this is comparable to a concourse, uh just isn't so, um. So I do think that in the discussion we've had here tonight seems like alcohol is the panacea of uh all good things for our community and I certainly don't agree. I, I don't think that's the case and uh so I'm, I'm in opposition to this because I don't, I don't believe this can possibly be put together, although it'd be great if it could in two years' time. Thank you.
All right. Is there any other questions or comments?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Royble.
Chris, the license, as it sits, is basically parked, right? It's not doing anything. It's just sitting in a vault somewhere gathering dust.
Mr. Mayor, through you, Councilman Royble. If this item gets approved tonight, it would not be issued until they met all the requirements to become operational. And this license, just as a note of clarification, it's not eligible for any other, any other entity other than the airport.
So if it's not approved tonight, it just sits.
That is correct. And the airport, through you, Mr. Mayor, the airport would have to come back with a, a new application.
Okay. And then as far as the, and I don't know who to ask this to, but as far as the ten to twelve or fourteen million dollars that it's going to take to rehab the building, the city has no part of that, because it is airport property.
Mayor, through you, that is correct.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Clerk, does the license become available July first? Is that correct?
Give me just a moment, please.
Is it already available? Okay.
Yes, it is.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Seagrave.
I think Mr. Royble brought out a very good point. This license can only be used by the airport.
Correct.
The benefit to us is that it helps the airport. It creates additional activity and sales tax for the city of Cheyenne. I believe, I've looked recently at the airport board of directors. I believe they have some very smart people there. If they convince and continue to convince the Wyoming Liquor Commission that they meet the intent in the letter of the law, I don't, I don't know that it's really my business to tell them how to administer it. I mean, if they want to put it in that concourse or terminal B, and they think that's the best use of it, I'm, I'm going to go with it. I, I just, I don't know where else they would use it. They don't need it in the main terminal because they have other, other means there. So I'm going to trust their judgment, their board of directors, and let them take a swing at it. So I want to be a yes. Thank you.
Mr. Eskel.
And Mr. Mayor, through you, Mr. Moser, I did come up with that other question.
Let's ask you a question, sir.
So we pass it, and the legislature puts sideboards on their sideboards where grandfathered in, correct?
Mr. Moser.
Mr. Mayor, through you, Representative Escabel. Similar to the sideboards that passed this last session, there was no grandfathering clause. However, in their defense, if there was an existing business that was already in operation, it would probably be grandfathered. The question is, is whether, because I understand the restaurant bar at the main terminal has closed. And the question is, is that, is that where the whole retail should go or another terminal? So that's, that's your call.
Mr. Labor, did you have a comment, sir? Nope. All right. We have a motion and a second to.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Just, just a comment. And if, if the license is just sitting there not doing anything, we have no impetus to, to get a movement going. But if you've got somebody that's got the liquor license, you see they got a year, it would, it would seem to me, as a businessman, you'd get in there and get things rolling. So I think it would put maybe a light of fire under whoever gets, gets the license to, to get in there and get something done. So just my thoughts.
We have a motion and a second to approve the application for a retail liquor license for the airport board. Is there any other comments from members of the governing body? All right, hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
So we have Mr. White, Mr. Labor, and Dr. Aldridge as knows, the liquor license application is approved.
Next item is thirty-three A. Reappointments of Merle Smith and Richard Valley to the Public Transit Advisory Board. Stephanie Reese and Danika Maron.
Madam Clerk, can I stop you real quick? We had a, I don't know if it's a Spindler's error or what, but Stephanie Reese's appointment goes till twenty twenty-five, so she should not be part of these reappointments.
So noted. To the Cheyenne Downtown Development Authority, Kenneth Dugas, to the Urban Renewal Authority, J.J. Chin, to the Lermi County Cheyenne Lermi County Economic Development Joint Powers Board, Kathy Emmons, Jeffrey Merton, O'Halloran, and Carla Thurren, to the Lermi County Community Juvenile Services Joint Powers Board, and Mackenzie Howard, to the Community Action of Lermi County Board of Directors.
All right. As usual, the mayor doesn't get to vote on appointments, and I do appreciate all these folks being willing to come back and serve. At this time, I'd entertain a motion. By Mr. Royble and seconded by Mr. White. All those in favor of the reappointments, please signify by saying aye. And those opposed, the appointments are approved.
Thirty-three B. Appointments of Timothy Johnson and Joel Hickerson to the Lermi County Juvenile Services Joint Powers Board, Michael Rucker to the Public Transit Advisory Board, and Janelle Rose, Judy Moss, and Landon Medina to the Cheyenne Downtown Development Authority Board.
All right. Again, the mayor doesn't get to vote on these, but these are new appointments to our boards. I'd entertain a motion. Mr. Labor, and then Mr. Seagrave. All those in favor of the appointments, please signify by saying aye. Those opposed?
No.
Mr. Johnson is a no. The appointments are approved.
Voucher report.
Is there anybody in the audience or on the governing body want to speak to the vouchers? Hearing none. Next item, please.
Revenue report.
Anybody in the audience or governing body want to speak to the revenue report? All right, next item, please.
Announcement that a Calcutta benefiting Cheyenne area charities will be held on Saturday, July twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-three at five thirty P.M. In the Cowboy Bistro located beside the rodeo committee cabin at Frontier Park, Cheyenne, Wyoming. In conjunction with the twenty twenty-three Cheyenne Frontier Days Rodeo, ten percent of proceeds go to bona fide charities. Announcement that due to the Independence Day holiday on Tuesday, July fourth, twenty twenty-three, regularly scheduled city council committee meetings will instead be held as follows. Finance committee will meet at ten A.M. Wednesday, July fifth, twenty twenty-three, and public services committee will meet at noon on Wednesday, July fifth, twenty twenty-three. Both meetings will be held at twenty-one oh one O'Neill Avenue, room one oh four, and via electronics conference meeting, other business.
Right. Is there anybody in the audience here today to speak to us under other business? All right, hearing none. How about from the governing body?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Johnson.
Okay, so the first item that was addressed to me, I recently went to the Juneteenth festivities, and it was addressed to me to kind of reevaluate the public transit opportunities. Once again, I guess the community has felt disenfranchisement this. I always ask for solutions to problems. One of the solutions that they thought could be looked at, I told them we had to look at staffing expenditures, overtime, benefits, and everything else before making a decision, but they brought up the idea that between Memorial Day and Labor Day, that if the hours could be extended and maybe lessened sometimes during the winter months, because there is people leaving, say, for example, the plaza that may need a ride home. I know at the Brew Fest, you know, the trolley was offering those rides, but they were looking for, you know, more avenues to get home later in the evening during the summer months. The second concern kind of segues into the Fridays in the Plaza. This was brought up, and this was actually a very interesting dichotomy. An individual came up to me and brought up animals that were in the plaza. I did talk with Jason at the depot, and it is clearly stated on the placards as you go into it. Jason says they've done everything from social media PSAs to ask people not to bring their animals into, into the Fridays in the Plaza. I know several of them that I saw were service animals, you know, that were clearly marked. And so we obviously have to look into something like that. I also learned that potentially with these types of events, we may have to draft a specific ordinance in regards to special events to actually put a restriction on it for animals. The reason this is a dichotomy is because a ten-year-old girl actually came up to me and told me that she pet fourteen dogs, and she was ecstatic by it. So I heard both sides of the equation. One person who was frustrated by animals in the plaza, and another person that was completely ecstatic with them being in the plaza. So it's kind of a, a difficult decision in regards to how we're going to pursue this. And then, I guess, I guess that was, I think, all I had. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Mr. White.
Mr. Mayor, thank you. I know we've been here a long time tonight, but I just wanted to give a shout out to Jason and staff of community, community recreation and events for the Super Day weekend. Super Day was super blustery, but it was still a lot of fun, and they couldn't, couldn't do a lot of the rides due to the high winds, unfortunately, but I, I know that the staff worked long and hard hours this weekend, like they always do in the summertime, but this weekend is especially big. They have to tear down from Fridays on the Plaza, then be at Lions Park at five o'clock in the morning to, to get set up after working all day Friday to get set up. So just a lot of time and man hours spent by Jason and his staff, and just wanted to congratulate them.
And Mr. White, not only that, but they had to tear down afterwards. And so in the late afternoon, the park looked immaculate again and ready for the public.
I don't know how they got that all torn down as quick as they did, but everything was wide open Saturday evening, so it was pretty amazing.
Yep.
I did remember my follow-up. Oh, he's got some.
He's going to tell us there's going to be a second Super Day. His staff would shoot him.
Mr. Mayor, may I comment real quick?
Please, sir.
Jason Sanchez, community record and events. And while I appreciate the compliment to our team, they did work extremely hard. But this is truly a city event. It took the entire city to pull this off. We rely on help from all the different departments. Our sanitation folks were helpful. Our street and alley, our compliance, the police department, fire, our attorney's office, city clerk, our accounting. It's truly a, a city event. It took all of us to put this on. Our team did work hard, but it's the, the compliment should be shared with the entire city. Thank you.
I think he's saying he's not the face of this project.
I remember my follow-up.
Yes, sir.
So I had a question in regards to tonight's proceedings. On twenty-nine Juliet, it was on consent agenda, and then it was pulled off. But yet there was no public comment and no comments from council, and it passed by unanimous vote. Was there any reason why this was pulled off of consent instead of remaining on it?
I'm not sure who made the motion to do that, so.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Seagrave made the main motion to pull that off.
I think you meant to do H and I, sir. Yep. No worries. Anybody else in the governing body under other business? All right, hearing none. We are adjourned, and thank you so much.